We're good.
Yep.
Paul, the order, the Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, regular meeting, September ninth, twenty twenty five, and ask everyone to stand in the public leaders. Public leaders. Thank you. All right. The role, Paul?
Andy Gross, Division.
Eric Burdick, alternate. Paul Stanley, chairman.
Daniel Ryan, Division.
Doug Uni, alternate.
School grade, Division.
Amanda Martinez, reporting secretary.
Could you speak louder, please?
Amanda Martinez, reporting secretary.
Do we have any other staff with us this evening online?
Jeremy DeCarly, interim town planner.
We have no other commission members online tonight. I don't see anyone. Dan?
Dan, our first one, thanks for the show. We have two seats, maybe three here.
Thank you.
There's another space or another back here.
And I will see Eric for Kitty and Doug for Bob one. All right. Our number three on agenda is the public input. Anyone have any public input? I'll remind you, any general public input, please, nothing about specific applications that are on the agenda in our business meeting tonight. Ma'am, would you step forward, state your name and address?
Sure. Nancy Ryan, twenty five Walnut Hill Road. My input is general. It's about eight thirty G and how it's being used in a way against the town. I find that recent articles that were written about the town calling us wealthy, calling the individuals who attend the meetings wealthy and against affordable housing, to be untrue. They're all for affordable housing. The way that's being done doesn't fit in with the neighborhoods in our town or in with the labor of our town. There's been affordable housing built in town that fits in with the neighborhood where it's being built and is there for the people to need it, to use it, it continues, et cetera. Yet, some of what we've been seeing lately, I'm not saying anything specific, doesn't fit in with our town and shouldn't be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, ma'am, have any public input?
Penny?
Hi. Penny Kessler, twenty two Springfield Lane. First of all, I want to thank you. I have been pushing for public input to happen at the beginning of the meeting for the six years that I've served on a commission. Because by the time the meeting ends, you are fried. Anybody who's left in the room is exhausted. So, thank you for making this change. That's a very big deal. My issue has nothing to do with any of the current things, but rather disappointment. And the disappointment is that every time I propose that we change the regulations for parking for all multifamily developments, I was shot down. And that has really been a problem for me. One of the reasons that I was sort of grateful that Governor Lamont covered the current office bill along with our representative for half, one of the reasons that I was grateful for that is that the bill that was presented would have, in addition to all of the eight thirty Gs, it would have removed the ability of a local public commission like ours to develop parking regulations. And that was, to me, I read the whole thing, and I just thought, that's ridiculous.
Awesome.
So, I, you know, during many times that proposals would come up, and I was told repeatedly, well, you know, developers don't make money on parking. Well, they don't, but the town really thrives places for people to park. So, I am continually disappointed that that has not come forward. That's it.
Excellent, thank you.
Anyone else have a question?
I'm not going to make my way in, though. I just have a general question.
What's your name and address, ma'am?
My name is Denise Farren, one fifty seven Chestnut Road. My general question is, and I am very uneducated in the ways of the town, I feel like I'm still new here, even though I've been here ten years, but how is it conceivable to anybody that Bethel can just keep going up and not support the things underneath our infrastructure? When we all are sharing water tables, we're all sharing septic, all of those things that would make it generally impossible to just keep building up to the sky, now that's infinite, that goes up to the sky. But the underneath of Bethel, the infrastructure of Bethel, how does anybody portend that is safe or that is viable to just keep building up or we're not even taking into consideration the ground that we all live on, the ground that we all share, the weather changes, all of these environmental things that absolutely are safety hazards? How does nobody figure that into all of this building that just keeps happening rapidly in this town? It's, it's really crazy. It's really just crazy. That's it.
Yeah.
Debbie Light, um, Archer Road, uh, here in Bethel. Thank you all for putting up with everybody. Uh, I know that it's a tough place to be in. My question is, and I hope I can ask this, how many apartments does the town need? Can I ask that? Because it seems like wherever I look, there are multi-families, multi-apartment units. I mean, when is enough enough?
Just to make sure I'm understanding, how many apartments do you mean to like, for what? In general, or to reach a moratorium?
Yeah.
We can get you that information.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so this is John the first.
Hi. Ken McGinnis, eighteen High Street. Going along with your statement earlier about, uh, infrastructure, the basis, uh, here in Bethel, I've been here for almost ten years, uh, noting what that, uh, the Glicken House manufacturing is moving from nearby Danbury to Detroit because the city of Danbury kicked their, uh, sewage program, they kicked the can for their sewage program down the road, and when it came time to update their plans, lost out on manufacturing there. So, I'm curious about what Bethel has planned if we're going to keep growing like this and keep building these, you know, these apartment complexes. What are the plans for the infrastructure beneath from the town's perspective, from the state's perspective? And then what's that going to cost us down the road?
Yep. Any point in our Kansas to look every year?
Anyone else?
Christina Rubik, eighty seven Chestnut Street. What I'd like to know is whether the fire department can even service a building, high buildings. I mean, do we have trucks that can go above two or three stories high? Because I know those trucks are very expensive.
Good. All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Nancy Sudick, two Ridgedale Road. I just have a simple question. At what point are we chasing our tail? If we approve, let's say, you know, a hundred regular price apartments, let's just say, and of those a hundred, perhaps thirty of them will be affordable, now the, now we still can't meet what the goal is for the state for us to be excused from doing a moratorium. At what point are we chasing our tail, if that's clear to you?
Ma'am?
Eileen Merrick, twenty five Taylor Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut. I have been here fifty years in this town. This is the worst I have ever, ever seen it. You have been overbuilding the infrastructure, the roads, the emergency systems, the roadways, and all this is going to fall back on all of us. And these people from New York, well, they're used to.
Please don't reference any.
Well, they're high rising and everything well above, and the topography does not match that area for what they want to do at all. When is this going to stop?
Yeah, when is it going to stop?
When is it going to stop?
Answers for anything?
Us people, we don't want this. Why don't these people stay in New York? Other buildings go up, and their, their other buildings go up, and they do go with the topography. But you're out of control with all these units down there on Nashville Road.
Please don't recommend, I'm going to cut you off. We can't reference any.
All right.
Any.
It has to, it has to stop, it has to end. Our town cannot handle it. I've seen things, it can't handle it. And you don't have the infrastructure, you don't have the roads, the water, the sewage, all this. Emergency system, drainage. It will go on and on and on. It goes on right down the road, and now you're getting, you're all getting ridiculous. Especially these, I can't stay in New York.
Out of state.
Out of state, out of state. By the way, we need businesses, we need manufacturing, we need to bring income back here. You lost Duracell, you lost GE, you lost how many other? And you're going to lose us.
Yeah.
Because we're going to move out. And it's not going to be Bethel, Connecticut anymore. It's not going to be in a nice, quiet, quiet little town anymore.
Why aren't they building where Duracell was?
Yeah, you've got all these affordable housings going up everywhere, and they're empty. Yeah. And I have apartments that are empty. Where do you think these people are coming from, too? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm pretty merciful, thanks for your service, I know you guys are doing a good time, you guys could be doing better, and so, we do, we be doing a lot of things at home.
Yep.
So, thanks for your service, and we appreciate that. And first of all, uh, my name is Oswald Chin, and, uh, from, uh, six Rockwell. Well, my story is simple. I lived about thirty years in Danbury, okay? And I know what the real estate machine has done in Danbury, okay? We have underfunded schools, underfunded roads, you keep naming, okay? So, what I'm trying to convey to all of you guys in here is that we have to stop. The growing treatment of housing is an investment vehicle rather than a basic need. These people, the real estate machines, they don't have loyalty to towns, to nobody. The only loyalty they have is to their pockets.
That's right.
Well, you know. How it's been done, that's okay. But let me tell you how in Danbury got even worse, and people didn't know this, but eventually, what you dig, you get to know, but if you don't come to meetings, you don't find these things out. So, they were allowed to build all over them, okay? But they were not happy just with that. They said, how can we get enough tax abeyment? That's only, you give that to a factory or a company that brings jobs. Hey, that's good for us, we bring jobs too. So, they corrupted the previous city councils, and they allowed that to happen to them. So, they got, they had five years tax abeyments, okay? Not paying taxes, these people, okay? So, this real estate machine is really crazy. And that, now, this, the, the, the kick in with this, I only said, five years is nine, no, no. Let's put a little provision in here that it'll be five years if the whole units, the whole complex is, is finished. But if one single unit is not finished, then it goes to eight years, things like that. They said, okay, we sign it. So, you know what? They finished ninety-nine units, but one unit, so they got the whole eight years because that's how they do it. In my wild, our schools are failing, you know how Danbury has been? And, and I don't want that to happen to Bethel. And with all the respect, I want you guys to respond and.
Yes.
Boom. I want you guys to respond why, because you guys are elected by the people, okay? Or appointed by the first elect. So, because if you guys don't do that, then some of us may be sitting in your seats to, to take care of these guys. But I learned, dealing with lawyers, and I put some of the lawyers right where they belong, okay? That money expended in litigation defending the public is never money best expended. There was always good money expended. And that's what we got to do. We cannot get go down without a fight. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. My name is Kevin Sutton, fifty-five Nashville Road, here in Bethel. We don't have our own sewage treatment plant here in Bethel, so we have to pump everything to Danbury, correct? So, doesn't Danbury have anything to say with how much crap we give them?
Next question.
Words for words.
I, they have a building in Danbury that right now they're going to have an issue with, it's on Main Street, and they're subject, they're going to have to release it after eleven o'clock at night because the sewage is too much for it to handle.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
That's in Danbury for their treatment plan. Where kinders go using it? So, when do they cut us off? And what do we do?
Yeah. Point, good point.
Thank you.
And that's the same.
Angie, sixty-four, well, I've lived in Bethel thirty-eight years, and I can't be as eloquent as some of the other people have been, but I would like to say that I support everything that's been said. But the one thing that I've truly noticed in the last, you know, ten, fifteen years is that traffic is just unmanageable. You really cannot go downtown three, four, five in the afternoon without, you know, expecting to wait a long time. So, I really would urge you to consider traffic patterns on Greenwood Avenue and surrounding feeder streets that it's already very difficult. That's my clarity of your perspective, but I definitely appreciate things other people ask.
Ma'am?
Linda Sorella, sixty-eight Redwood. The traffic on Stony Hill is horrendous. The schools are suffering, there's more students, less money, they're cutting services to the students. As far as the last budget that we talked about, that there was a lot of conversation about that, I don't know what the final decision was. And I'd like to know how many people in P and Z are either builders, realtors, or the families are. Because I don't think you're loading the, the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mary O'Leary, ten Nashville Road Extension. I'd just like to take a minute and have everybody remember that everybody that sits on this board is a volunteer. They are elected by the people. If we want to replace them, we have that right. However, I think you're doing the best you can, and I'd like to thank you because this must be horrendous keeping you awake at night. We have too much building. If you allow it to continue, it won't end with these projects, then you'll have another one and another one. We need to take a stand, say no.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Me. I'm new to Bethel, so you all have been here a long time, I'm really new, like.
Got to give your name.
Name, address.
Cindy Slater, eight Briar Ridge Drive.
Thank you.
I live in one of these complexes. I would not have bought it had I known all of this had been going on, but I moved to Bethel because I drove up Greenwood Avenue with my Realtor, I was looking in Newtown, and drove up Greenwood Avenue with my Realtor, and I fell in love with this quaint, kind of quirky little town, and it was just like the perfect place for me. And since I've been here, watching what's going on, there have been a couple of big issues that have happened just since I've been here, it's really changing. I mean, the thought of like, being able to see a building behind Carol Luce's is, I, I hate that idea. Why would we want to do that without even trying to stop it? That's all.
Anyone else? Uh, before I go back to, ma'am, you have some.
Um, my name's Angelina Volpatesta, I live at eight Beach Street, Bethel. Um, I'm almost sixteen years old, I was born and raised in Bethel, Connecticut. One of my biggest dreams is to have a family someday, to have kids, and I always wanted them to grow up in a small town like this, this town is my home, and my family has been here for fifty years. My grandfather had a doctor's office in the center of town, and every day it becomes less and less familiar to me, and that makes me really sad. I miss the town I grew up in, and I wish it would stop changing.
Before we move on, standing up in a room, just full at your age, tough to do. Anyone else in the room have anything to add? Anyone online? Nobody wants to follow you. Okay.
Could I add one more thing?
Sure.
Jen Gandy, sixty-four, one room.
Yes, ma'am.
I, um, over the years, I, I had an issue in two thousand and three in our neighborhood that we felt that there was building on, on Wetlands, it was downtown halls, Wetlands, but got built on, uh, got built on less because we kind of fought back. But over the years, what I've heard is, is we don't have the money to hire attorneys the way that these big realtors have the money to hire attorneys. So, what could be done to make sure that we have legal representation? What we did in two thousand and three, we didn't have the attorneys that the builder had, but we had expert testimony from contractors who knew that it was wrong to build, whether they were building and, you know, other things, but it's just sort of, it seems to me in this climate, we've got to have a line item to have attorneys help with this.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Who we've had? Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Light, I just want to say that we're fighting against this, and it's probably going to go through. This building is going to.
Ma'am, ma'am, you can't talk about anything in specifics, please.
Back it up, I'm sorry. The structures going up will be here forever until they fall down. So, I mean, this is not something when, when there's developing going on, that it's going to be gone in a month, it's going to be here three years. Is that okay to say that like that?
So, any, you're just saying any, just keep in mind, any improvements are here for the long term.
Long term, yeah, and I've been here long, I've been here fifty years in Bethel, so, and I've seen the change, I remember the head shop. Yeah. I didn't go there. And the very first time I drove through Bethel, I got through town, and I said, where is this place? And the guy that was in the car with me said, you just broke through. I'm like, okay, so, yeah, Bethel has changed.
Anyone else have anything to add before we move on? Yes, sir.
All these questions that get asked at all these meetings, there've been about three of them, I've just started coming to them because of certain reasons.
Yes.
Well, how do we find out the answers? When do we get answers?
Yeah, get answers.
Answers.
And how do we find them? I, I've never heard answers come back to a lot of questions.
Public input is not a question and answer, never in a town meeting. If it's a public hearing, we get answers. If, there's no debate that happens during public input. Public input is you giving your input, that's it, no matter what meeting you go to, planning and zoning or the finance board selection.
And what's your name and address?
Nancy Ryan, twenty five. But that's how it is, and that's how it has to be, otherwise we have chaos in the inner, so.
Oh, I hear it's they're writing everything down, there must be a reason.
They may answer, but they don't have.
So, this is a waste of time?
No.
Is this a waste of time?
Anyone else have anything else?
Not at all.
Yeah, is this a waste of time? Telling how we feel?
I wouldn't say it's a waste of time, but that's, you're for you to decide, ma'am.
What's the resolution?
Yeah, what's the resolution?
I have a question, I have a question.
There's no question.
I call on Penny first, ma'am.
Oh, sorry. So, Penny Kessler, again, this is not a waste of time.
Nope.
We are a town meeting, is that what it's called? Form of government, Dan, is that? We are a town meeting form of government. There are paid professionals, everything else is done by volunteers. We are the town, and we have a right to speak, we have a right to say what we think. We may not like the fact that in this particular forum, we may not get answers. I sat on this thing for six years, trust me, we take notes, they are taking notes, whether they respond or not, all of what we're saying is going to go into their deliberation, I trust. So, by your being here, you are participating in our form of government, and the only way to not have this kind of form of government is to do like a Danbury, a mayor, city council. But that's, that's what Bethel is, and I think that's part of what makes Bethel special, is that these guys don't have to be here, they're volunteers, just like all of us, and we all carry the same weight.
Thank you, Penny.
December, southern seventy Wolf Pit Road in Bethel. Um, we voted last year for the, to purchase the Wells Fargo, which went, did not go through. What happened to all that money allocated to that? Why can't we use that for lawyer expenses?
Yeah.
I, I have, just have a question. So, I, I came in hot in the beginning, I, I was Denise Farren, and I, too, appreciate all of you. I'm super fed up from the get-go, but it's, yes, I'm a little passionate, but I was lucky not to be able to build here in this town, and it was a very strict building process. I had people coming out to check that I did everything right multiple times. We were at, we had to add another six thousand dollar drain in front of our house to accommodate the extra water flow that we were going to be creating. So, my question would be, if I had to follow all those things, and I, and I gladly did, and I'm grateful that I, that they were in place for me to follow, who is following the trail of the infrastructure here? Who assesses whether this is safe or not, whether the infrastructure can hold all of this that is going to be added to the town? Where, where does that come from? Are there civil engineers on the payroll? Who makes these decisions that they've said, okay, this road can sustain whatever it is, we're going to put it here, it's safe, it's going to be fine, it's not going to interfere with any of the other functions that are already in the town? Like, where, where did that start? I, and I generally want to know because I really don't, but I know that the process for me was very thorough, and I appreciated it, and I thought, that's great, this town really takes this seriously. And then I'm watching all of this happen. So, which is it? Do we take it seriously, or is it just people with a lot of money, they don't have to take it seriously, but we all do?
Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll move on from our public input session, I'll move into our business meeting. Uh, I will see, Mr. Leggard is here?
Yes.
So, uh.
I'm, I'm, I'm seated, Doug.
Yeah, so Doug, uh, you are unseated for the business meeting. And Mr. Leggard, uh, is seated. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our meeting on eight twelve? Yeah, yes. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Well, no, there's just two typos and my question was, um, it didn't say anything about us talking after the public hearing, after the public spoke. But she said because it was in that other line that it was fine, so I don't know, that's fine with you all.
You wanna correct the typos?
Does it matter?
I mean, yeah.
I can, I can amend it.
Yeah.
And, and I would just have a line that says after the public spoke, that we spoke. Because it looks like we didn't speak. I mean, it says, I know it says in that first line, but.
Yeah, so it says in the first line that, that you, that the public and commission all asked questions.
And, and then it had the public listed.
Correct.
And then it.
And then it said, who answered the questions raised by the public and commission?
Okay, right. I, my question on, from all of us is, there are no details about what we say in these minutes. And I don't know if that's typical or whether we can require them to have more detail. On a project, on certain projects, I think it needs to be spelled out.
I think everything's in public, public record and online, right? There were video recordings.
Right, someone has to listen to the whole thing to hear our public comments, anything that we have, like, you know.
So this is something that's kind of like the debate a long time. Um, minutes normally do not date, they reflect the fate of what happened in a meeting. Very difficult actually for somebody to take minutes that are that, you know, transcribed. So in the past, actually P and Z is one of the very few commissions that is required by law to be recorded. It used to be it had to have an audio recording. Because again, it's very difficult to make minutes actually match what happened. Today, we do this through the video recording. So you, as a commission, you can require anything you want with respect to doing the minutes. I would, I would just be conscious in the fact that it's still very difficult to get it just right. Because the, the recording is really the best thing so we can go to, to see what happened. But it is only within your purview to decide how you want it done. Just, I wanna give a little context of history, that's it.
And there's some software that we realized now can be done, which isn't perfect either. Cause I know doctors offices haven't decided maybe not to use some of these, but.
Yeah, that's something the commission wanted to do with respect to transcribing, to have a transcription. Um, from the county perspective, we were glad, we were glad to help you have that in whatever way you want. We could do that. It just be very difficult for her to take them. Having a transcription, just understanding that we were gonna use Gemini AI or whatever it is, it could have its own challenges. But it's something we've actually been exploring to kind of take a little bit of burden off of the secretary.
Right, I know it's a lot.
So we could actually, you know, do something for the commission as a, as a resource, cause that's what the town's job is, it's important to us.
I, I just, my concern is that it doesn't look like we've said anything and we have.
Understood.
So it just shows what the applicant says and not us.
So I would, I'd recommend, Mr. Chairman, at some point you guys decide what you wanna do with that and, um, I, I don't know that we've been to take a board, though, but you just wanna know how it sounds in the town, we'll figure it out. I don't think it'd be a lot for us to just kind of turn it on.
Do you wanna call the, uh, the specific, uh, typos on it?
It's, uh, it was under public. And especially. Especially. And then I, I don't know if anyone was. I wasn't sure when, um, Paul, that, at the race that they were letting on, because I think she spoke. So I don't know if it made any difference, like on page three of the minutes.
Public hearing, you don't have to be seated.
No, it's during the public, during the work session of Bob had left.
Right. But then Jeff did speak.
Yeah.
So that's why I, I didn't know whether that needed to specify there.
Just saying that. Uh, Jeff was seated when Mr. and I left.
It says.
I'm just.
And then Paul. And then it says, Dan discussed the application, but it should, at some point show when we spoke and when, cause Jeff also spoke.
Right after.
Yeah.
Right after right or left, it says Paul Shanley sat.
Yeah.
Jeff Wilson.
Right.
Right.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
It is in the next.
Right, it is.
Okay, so we're good.
I guess so.
First, I'll, I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as amended by Diane. All in favor? Go ahead, Mr. Leggard.
Uh, just for the record, I, I lost power, battery power, uh, end of the last meeting. But I watched the, uh, tape where everything that went on there, just for the record.
Thank you, Bob. I'm sorry, are we called a vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Alright, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, we have an invoice for six hundred and thirteen dollars and ten cents for public noticing to Connecticut Media Group. I'll make a motion to pay that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Okay. Uh, we'll move into our work session. First item is One Noelwood Drive LLC, it's an eight thirty G for seventy-two Reservoir Street. I'm actually recu, recused from this application. Mike, can you take over? We'll see, uh. Yep, like, sure. Um, thank you, Paul. Uh, we're gonna seat Doug Kennedy for, for Paul Stanley. Amanda, we're just gonna seat Doug for Paul.
Okay.
Um, Paul, he's, I was late, open house, knocked to school, ran a little pavement, so. Um, we are, uh, in our kind of deliberation period here for, for One Noelwood Drive, seventy-two Reservoir Street. I know that staff had provided, uh, both letters of, of approval and a letter of denial without prejudice. Uh, did everyone have a chance to review those? Um, recall that our last meeting that we discussed the project, we actually, uh, took a consensus vote that was to deny it. Uh, I think staff covered our reasoning pretty well in there. Does anyone have anything else they would like to talk either in favor or against that? I'll start down here with Penny.
Uh, reluctantly. The vote, and we did, I'm not happy that I voted that way, but it's all interesting.
Okay. Uh, no additional comments, sick concerns, uh, continue for me. Diane?
Um, the only other thing I would have added in here is, um, the health department had made a concern about the address and confusion that that could have. Um, because it's not on Reservoir Street, it's gonna be on.
No one.
On Noelwood. So I would put that in there as another concern about it, uh, because she talked about being unsafe for emergency, to find it.
Okay. Uh, Doug?
I maintain safety concerns, uh, from the original discussions. Um, and also have concerns about the ownership of the land still hasn't been resolved, so I've actually added another.
He just in there.
It is, yep, I agree, Chairman. Anything else, Doug?
No, sir.
Screw?
I, I agree with the reasons for rejecting this eight thirty G application. Only in due instance reasons.
Uh, Mr. Leggard?
We're, we're doing this without prejudice, is that right?
Correct, sir.
So, uh, they can come back, if, if, if the conditions that we recommended, they change those conditions. They come back, uh, by for an approval.
Um, I'm almost a hundred percent positive, but I'll let J, uh, uh, is that, is that confirmed there?
I mean, they, they can certainly come back, it, again, it's an eight thirty G, so they can come back. They can also, uh, they also have a right to appeal, uh, the decision to the court. So it's, it's gonna be up to them as to how they want to, uh, respond to a denial.
Okay. That's all, I just wanted to, that, that was clear in everybody's mind. Um, I, I agree with everybody around the board, I think, uh, the last time we discussed it. Recall my, my opinion was, it was just too dense of a site there, too, too, too close to the sightlines. Uh, I think one commission member brought up the fact that it was, you know, should have been fifteen feet sightline instead of ten feet that was used. That's safety enough for me, I mean, that building is way too close to the edge of the road. Um, I think that needs to be revisited. And then snow removal, I mean, it's just, there was no place to put it. That's just gonna ask for issues, safety and bio. Um, so, is there any other discussion points you wanna have on this?
The other issue was that the health department was concerned about the snow coming up against the building and being that close, and he said eight feet for snow removal, but I think it's still gonna be a problem there and.
I, I'd agree.
Unhealthy.
I'd agree. Um, so Diane, I don't know, I mean, we could put your, your point in about the, um, the address change. Usually with projects, that's kind of determined after the fact. Um, I don't think that's a health and safety reason to add it as a conditional denial. Does anyone else have their opinion?
Yeah, I, I would generally agree with you, Mike. I think, you know, that, that's currently the address of that property is a Reservoir Street address. If it were to be approved, it would certainly be reassigned to Noelwood Ave, or Noelwood Drive.
That goes to the postmaster general, right? But they, they had to kind of decide what that address would be.
I think it's, I think in every town's a little bit different, but it's, um, I think it's probably a decision between the land use department and the assessor's office. And then, uh, we let the post office know what the street address will be.
Alright. I think, uh, kind of nailed all the, the points around this discussion, so we're gonna take a roll call, vote, um, well, sorry, does anyone wanna make a motion to take a vote?
Make a motion, we take a vote on the proposed One Noelwood Drive LLC.
And, and the motion being?
That we reject it.
I'll second that. I'll take a roll call, start down here, Kenny?
Voting to reject.
Alright, yes, vote to reject. Yep, myself, vote to reject.
Vote to reject.
Vote to reject.
Vote to reject.
Mr. Leggard?
Vote to reject.
Motion passes.
Great.
Uh, where's Paul?
Paul. Alex. Got to be back there.
Alright, uh, we'll move into item five B, uh, Judith and Frank Saunders. Uh, this is an eight thirty G site plan, um, that was denied, uh, a few years ago and went to court and court has now ordered us to approve it. Uh, Jeremy, you have something for us on this?
I do, um, myself and Dave McCullum and Beth Kavagna and Chuck Andres have been working in the background with the applicant's attorney, attorney Ken Slater from Halloran Sage, uh, to come up with a, an approval motion and a list of conditions that are acceptable to the applicant, to the landowner. Um, we've done that, uh, we've provided you with that, with that draft motion, with those conditions. Uh, we, we are focused on preventing headlight intrusion into neighboring properties through various means, mostly plantings along the, uh, western side of that property. Um, that, that'll be, uh, mitigated by about a six-foot retaining wall that, that, uh, butts the parking lot. Um, as a reminder, right, this is a, this is an application that was denied a couple of years ago, went to court and the decision's been remanded back to the commission. So at this point, the court is telling the commission, you must approve this application. Um, we of course have the ability to work with the applicant to come up with con, conditions of approval. We've done that and, and what they've agreed to is in, in front of you this evening. Uh, and attorney Slater is on the call, if you have any specific questions for him. Um, but like I said, he's reviewed this and, and, uh, he and I have spoken two or three times already today, so I think we're in pretty good shape with what's there.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, does any mission members have any questions, comments, concerns on this? While we review this?
We have to decide on this tonight, I think it's a long, long.
Uh, yes.
We do.
Do you want to just take a few minutes and read it? Yeah. Our hands are tied, though. Yeah, our, our hands are tied, yeah.
But the one thing I'll note is that we did catch a typo this evening on the final date of the, uh, site plan. The final revision date should be, uh, and we'll, we'll, you know, once the motion's made and we send this thing out, we will, we'll, uh, fix that, but it should be.
Which day, Jeremy?
March, March ninth, twenty twenty-three. It's right at the beginning of the motion. It's in the, it's in the fourth whereas.
To be. Is that? March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three?
Uh, March ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Instead of April.
Instead of April twenty-fourth.
Uh, no, instead of, I think it was, uh, May fourth of twenty twenty-two. It's, it's just a reference to the last revision date of the site plan. The next whereas is the wetlands approval they received.
Excuse me, Paul. Paul, while you're reading, can I just ask, are you permitted, are we permitted? To hear, a lot of us were here for those very contentious meetings. Are you permitted to share the conditions that?
Yeah, I was going.
Are you able to do that?
I was gonna read them aloud.
Great, thank you.
They've also been posted in the Google Drive, which is accessible via, uh, or accessible to the public.
Thanks, thank you.
The original drawing is in all that stuff.
Yeah, the site plan is also in the Google Drive, I added that today.
Okay. Well, there's twenty-two of them, um, I'm gonna read them aloud. Any other special members want to jump in and table the twenty-five grand? Um, the draft motion to approve seventeen Whitney Road eight thirty G housing development. Whereas Frank and Judith Saunders, an address of eighty-four Kent Creek, Danbury, Connecticut, oh six eight one one, is the owner of real property located at seventeen Whitney Road in the town of Bethel, Connecticut. And whereas the property at seventeen Whitney Road is compromising approximately one point five sixty acres and si, in size larger than the town of Bethel, it's entirely within double R ten zone. And whereas Frank and Judith Saunders has submitted an application for a site plan approval for the construction of forty-two residential unit development under the provisions of Connecticut General Section eight dash thirty G. And whereas the applicant has submitted a site plan entitled Proposed Site Development Seventeen Whitney Road, Bethel, Connecticut, prepared for Frank and Judith Saunders by Michael J. Bazooka, P C, dated two twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, and last revised on three nine twenty twenty-three. Whereas the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission issued a wetland permit number I W C dash twenty twenty-two dash oh six, approved the modification to that permit for the affordable housing project of seventeen Whitney Road on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the Connecticut Superior Court reviewed an appeal of the May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three decision to deny the application and in the decision entered on June sixth, twenty twenty-five and saw the planning, uh, Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, J D Hartford has remanded to the commission to approve the application with conditions consistent with the court's decision. Now their report be resolved that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves the application as presented and shown in the latest plans revised on May fourth, twenty twenty-two for the reasons stated above, with the following conditions, each of which the commission finds to be integral to this approval. Number one, except as modified, the project shall be constructed in accordance with the site plan sheet, set site plans, seven sheets titled Proposed Site Development Seventeen Whitney Road, Bethel, Connecticut, prepared for Frank and Judith Saunders by Michael J. Bazooka, P C, dated two twenty-three, twenty-two, and last revised, uh, five four twenty twenty-two. That is also should be three nine twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
Or two, there shall be forty-two residential units in accordance with the latest revised plan set dated May fourth, twenty twenty-two. That should also be three nine twenty twenty-three?
Correct. Correct.
I'll do this page for you, Paul. All right. Um, you're not Seth. No, but since, oh, I'm sorry. I sat for Paul when he named.
Yeah.
Yes, you're on. I appreciate, I'll read. Thank you. Uh, except as modified in accordance with these conditions, the proposed new structure shall be constructed in accordance with the architectural plan titled new apartment building seventeen Whitney Road, five sheets, prepared by B B S Design LLC dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Number four, the applicant shall revise appendix A, the affordability plan to show affordable units on all three floors with a total of thirteen affordable units, including seven living units set at a price for those earning no more than sixty percent of the median income and six living units set at a price for those earning no more than eighty percent of the median. The affordability plan shall be reviewed and approved by the town attorney to ensure compliance with C G S section eight dash thirty G prior to issuance of a zoning permit. Number five, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the affordability plan shall be submitted and reviewed by the Affordable Housing Administrator for the town of Bethel before being filed with the Bethel Office of the Town Clerk. A copy showing proof of the filing shall be submitted to the Bethel Land Use Department. Number six, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall comply with any and all other relevant applicable codes to the town of Bethel and state of Connecticut. Number seven, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall receive final approval from the Public Utilities Commission for sewer and water connections. This went to section one uh, dot B dot four of County Bethel Water Rules and Regulation of October sixteenth, twenty seventeen. If any of the approved units are to be owned by individual owners at the time of construction and or converted to a later date separately owned units, then each unit shall have a separate exterior service pipe and meter installed for the measurement of the water use. The type of meter and pipe and the installation same shall be subject to the review and approval by the Bethel Public Utilities Employees at their designated or their designated agents. Chris, land to section one dash one dash five dot two of the Town of Bethel Sewer Use Regulations of August first twenty-nine uh, twenty oh nine, I'm sorry. Units in a multifamily, multi-use commercial or industrial building require separate and independent sewer line provided the same as under a single ownership. In the event that the units are to be owned separately by individuals at the time of construction and or converted to a later date, there shall be a separate sewer connection in the form of a single sewer line and meter for each separately owned unit. Should the applicant, successor, owner, or association of units desire not to be, not to have separate service lines and meters installed for each individually owned unit, but has a proposed alternate plan for the same, then an application may be against the Public Utilities Commission for waiver of such requirements. Number eight, the applicant shall address and comply with any review comments provided by the Bethel Fire Marshal and is submitted during the application process. Number nine, the applicant shall address and comply with any review comments provided by the Bethel Police Commission in the Bethel Police Department as submitted during the application process. Number ten, prior to the commencement of any site construction, all erosion and sediment control measures shall be installed and maintained according to notes on the drawings and performance with the twenty twenty-four C T guidelines, guidelines for soil erosion and sediment control. E N S measures shall remain in place and be maintained if the site is fully stabilized. The commission indoors designated agent may require additional E N S measures as needed throughout the construction. Number eleven, construction practices may uh, shall be in performance with the guidelines as stated in twenty twenty-four Connecticut Small Water Quality Manual. Number twelve, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the applicant shall submit an erosion and sediment control bond in the form of either cash or letter of credit and an amount to be approved by town staff. Number thirteen, prior to issuance of a building permit, as requested by the Director of Health, the applicant shall provide a written garbage maintenance agreement that will be used with building occupants for proper garbage and recyclable storage and removals to prevent nuisance conditions on the site. Number fourteen, all work within the public right of way included, including but not limited to water and sewer connections and road reconstruction shall be protected by the issuance of a performance bond in the form of a letter of credit or cash and an amount to be approved by town staff prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. Number fifteen, a sidewalk is to be installed along the front edge of the property in accordance with the town of Bethel standards as shown in the latest revised plans, last revised. That's also seems to be.
Three nine twenty-three.
Thank you. Number sixteen, a performance bond shall be furnished to the town in the amount approved by the Bethel Public Works Department in the amount in the form of either cash or a letter of credit to guarantee the construction of the sidewalk due to its proposed location within the right of way. Number seventeen, additional landscaping in the form of two white spruce trees, at least eight feet tall at the time of planting is to be shown between the proposed sugar maple trees in the landscape area between the entry and exit drives is to be shown in the final site plan in order to mitigate the vehicle headlight intrusion into the property known as eighteen Whitney Road, which lies directly across the street. Number eighteen, in order to mitigate vehicle headlight intrusion. Number nineteen, additional landscaping in the form of fifteen arborvitae trees spaced four feet apart, at least eight feet tall at the time of planting is to be shown along the southern property line bordering the property known as twenty-five Elden Avenue in front of the six parking spaces facing, facing the neighboring property in order to mitigate vehicle headlight intrusion. Number twenty, site work preparation along with excavation and fill activity shall be conducted between the hours of eight and five Monday and Friday. No such work in place on weekends or federal holidays. Number twenty-one, a construction sign shall be posted at the site instructing all workers and construction vehicles to exit and enter via Whitney Road, which leads to a controlled intersection for the safety of those residents located on the adjacent narrow Elden Avenue. And number twenty-two, the applicant shall contact the Bethel Land Use Department to schedule a pre-construction meeting prior to commencing construction activities. Thanks. So does anybody have any comments, questions?
Paul?
Yes, sir.
I got a question for Jeremy.
Sure.
Hey Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
What if we all decided, well, no, well, what happened?
Uh, the applicant will most assuredly uh, appeal back to Superior Court and that will be remanded back to you again and we'll just be in a circle.
So roughly a year from now?
I don't think it would take that long since the court's already made the decision once. I think, I think attorney Andres is on and maybe he could speak to that.
Yeah.
Uh, Chuck Andrews for the record, if we were to violate the court order, which required us to approve it with conditions, we just denied it, though the applicant would likely file a motion for contempt of court that would be violating a um, court judgment. And that would be a quicker result than a year. Uh, that would be simply a motion that we're filling didn't apply with a court order.
That answer your question? Yeah. Still gonna do it.
Can the initial, here's a question for you too. An initial concern about from the board was the um, fanons, whatever the silt or.
Fugitive dust.
Yeah. Fugitive dust that was there. We, our concern had been when we discussed this, you know, are we liable if anybody gets sick? Because the, the court just ignored that whole thing. So is there anything that can be put in here that makes us not liable if there's anybody that gets sick from this? The town or the P and Z or anybody else?
Um, I, I, I guess the short answer is no. Uh, is there anything? Uh, if someone wants, if someone does get sick because of fugitive dust, we did request that it feasible that some additional screening be provided, but the applicant did wanna provide with that and frankly, uh, under the court decision, they probably don't have to. Um, but so we've done everything, we, 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 we've tried given at this stage, but um, need, so I, I don't think the answer is, I don't think uh, he can put anything in this decision to insulate the town from liability. That said, um, that, that's a whole separate issue. Someone, the, the, the town is not causing any dust problems. It's coming from the neigh- neighboring property. Um, if, if anyone would be, and, and typically the town is not liable through the regulatory process. It has, there, there's a very extraordinary burden to recover. I, 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 we're, we're going outside of land use law, we're just going liability against municipalities for anything. Um, it, it's a pretty tough standard to, because there's various notice and immunities to municipalities um, to have the town found liable. Um, so any, and presumably they would sue the bad guy. They would, who's actually causing the dust surrounding the town. When the town may be a secondary defendant. So anyway, it's, it, it's a fair question. I understand that. It's a concern. We, we, we've done what we can to address it and we pointed it out. Uh, but yet we have this court order that, that's requiring us to approve that as submitted, so, so that's what we're doing. And uh, so I think that's a habit and if you add that with the additional um, uh, burdens that anyone who is sick would have to show to go after the town. Um, it, it would be difficult.
Thank you, Chuck.
About the hours, uh, all the things, going at five P M. The sidewalk. I guess that was agreed on.
It was, yeah. Yeah, Jeremy, the, the hours of, of uh, operation and working, eight to five?
Yeah, what, what about them?
Uh, Diane was asking about that. Is that it's something that was, is that, did that a standard? I, I thought that sounds a little late to me.
Uh, we had put that in there and, and uh, you know, the, the number of us had looked at that. The applicant has agreed to it. I don't know that they'll actually work that late, although five o'clock is kind of a, you know, a standard shutdown time for a lot of businesses.
The issue was children getting on buses and all that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we, you know, you, you could try to, you could try to change it. Uh, again, we've got Chuck here, we've got the applicant's attorney here. I, I, I don't know if, uh, I don't know if they're gonna wanna go any shorter than that.
Says how long they have to do this. Some other ones say they have certain amount of time to construct it.
Uh, it's generally five years.
It's written on some other things that we get, we know this.
Yeah, Jeremy, that's, 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 that's standard, correct?
It would be a fi- it's typically a five-year approval. That's correct, yep.
Yeah, does that have to be in here or that's, that's?
Uh, it doesn't have to be in there. Um, it, you know, that's, that approval date will be on the letter that gets issued with an expiration date for the, for the site. And of course, they can come back and get a five-year extension if they needed it. Um, can't imagine that, that, that they would necessarily need it, but um, it's, I would not say that it's a standard, or I don't think it's a standard requirement and, and I don't typically include that as a condition when I write these things.
Uh, Slater, I'm out of it. Am I allowed to address you directly? Inviting you to the work session. Do I have to go through Chuck for this? Uh, Chuck, or maybe you can answer that. I have a question for him.
Uh, I, I think you can ask attorney Slater, uh, any questions. This is, we're, we're working this out pursuant to the. Right.
Um, I would show that, let me ask you, would, would lowering that number from five P M to like four P M be something you guys would be uh, okay with or even three thirty? I know three thirty is usually quitting time for most construction companies anyways. Uh, I know Diane brought up, you know, school kids getting off the school bus.
Well, I'm, I mean, my first reaction, having raised kids, is that having everybody shutting down at around the same time the buses are coming might not necessarily be better. Um, I can try to reach, you know, there, my, my client said a death in the family, I might not be able to reach them. I mean, the five o'clock is a pretty standard term. Uh, I've not, I've seen hours later, but I don't remember seeing hours before five o'clock. And, and as you say, I think a lot of places do shut down earlier anyway, but to, to limit that if a delivery truck was gonna bring something in or people who were, you know, making good progress on the job, um, yeah, I, I'll speak, I know I can't re- reach them. Um, you know, five, five o'clock is a very reasonable hour. I've seen a lot of these approvals. I represent a lot of towns like Chuck does, attorney Andrews does. Um, and that's, that's a very standard hour and, and, and so I, I, I think you should stick with it.
What was your question?
Can I, excuse me, I'm sorry, gang, it's Beth Kavagna. Can I speak in reference to that?
Yes, Beth, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Beth Kavagna. I am the retired planner for the town of Bethel and I am on this just because of working intimately with Jeremy and Chuck regarding the resolution and the case itself. Um, eight to five is very standard. It's in your zoning regulations. The excavation and fill activities should take place between eight and five. And most um, developers that I've worked with over the years, they frown on the eight o'clock. They like to start earlier, six or seven. Um, and the five o'clock, I would tell you that usually they're done by five o'clock. The important part in particular with this particular application is that the um, applicant, whoever the app, whoever the developer is, understands that all permits should be in place to the zoning and building department and health department before any activity takes place on the property.
And Chuck Andrews, attorney for the commission, just again, reiterating what Beth said, your existing regulations, it's section six point four. Again, it's talking about hours of operation for excavation and fill. That reads, no operation shall be undertaken on the site except between the hours of eight A M to five P M local time, Monday through Friday, no weekends or holidays. So that's the general standard that you guys have in your regs.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck.
Do we have to change those rules if we wanna make it different?
We certainly do. We could, but unfortunately we couldn't make it like this, yeah.
But we have a.
We have, yeah, that's, we should change the law. You could propose to change anything you want.
Cause we've been putting that on.
You can change your regulations, but keep in mind that, that this particular application, the ones like it are eight thirty G applications and the zoning regulations don't necessarily apply. So having a standard in there is a good idea for most applications, but um, you know, even if it was a different hour in your regulation, i- it's, it's somewhat irrelevant for this app.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Just about the, you know, police um, monitoring or whatever, you know.
I don't think that was ever brought up during.
During your.
I think the only thing that we found uh, with regard to traffic was including a right turn only sign out of the site, forcing construction traffic out to the traffic light as opposed to down Elgin uh, to that stop sign intersection. So that's why we included that. The applicant has agreed that that's a reasonable enough condition to, to include.
I'm in favor.
See as I read it, I'll make the motion to approve the seventeen Whitney Road eight thirty G housing development as I read it.
Second.
Do we do a roll call vote? Do Lagnard?
I'm in favor of passing this, uh, as per court order.
Eric, I'll steal the lead box and ask for court order, yes. For court order, yes. I also am a yes. Diane?
I'm a protest, no, I was here as a citizen making comments and.
All right. Motion passes. Five to two. All right, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. Oh yeah, Chuck, you might stay on?
Uh, no problem, I can stay on, although I have no, I, I, I don't know anything else about the other applications on the agenda.
Excellent. Well, we might just watch your legal opinion. Uh, we're gonna move on to the last item in our work session, which is item five C, the vessel RE Holdings LLC. Uh, forty-eight fifty National Road, eight thirty G site plan for the five-story seventy-five unit proposal. Uh, Jeremy, you had something for us, I believe?
I did, uh, and it should be, it should be printed out there. I think Amanda provided it for you. We got it sort of late, late. No, we got it, we got it to you earlier than that, actually. We sent it out in an email last week. Uh, we, myself, uh, I've worked with the applicant on Nashville Road here to come up with a list of conditions for you to consider. This is a deliberation stage at this point. Um, you're not obligated to vote tonight. Um, you know, if, if you get to that point, great. If not, that's, that's okay. Um you know, if if you get to that point, great. If not, that's that's okay. Uh we've worked with the applicant's attorney to come up with a list of conditions that's there. Um Attorney Klein has stated that there, if there are additional reasonable conditions. Uh he's certainly open to that concept and and open to additional items that need to be discussed. One thing that was brought to my attention. After the document in front of you was put together, and I've discussed it with Attorney Klein, is a safety fence atop the. Uh retaining wall that sits on the western side of the site. Um uh on the side of the site that abuts the condos that are, I think it's the Chestnut Condos. Um and so they're open to to putting in a chain link fence atop that wall just to prevent anybody from accidentally falling off or whatever. Um but other than that, I'll sort of let you go through those conditions that we've put together so far and and have a discussion. And keep in mind, those those uh conditions that you have include the four-story option rather than the five-story option.
So Jeremy, number is uh the fence you said on the western side above the um retaining wall?
Correct.
And that's not on here, so we make that like number twenty-three?
Yeah, it's not on the version that you got. I had that conversation with it with Attorney Klein today. Um and I can even give you specific language that uh was drafted up for that. Or I'm sorry. Question, no, it's the eastern side of the site, above above the proposed building towards the uh existing condos.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I don't think they put anything on there about the guard railing.
Yeah, Jeremy, was there any talk about the guard rail on the um the driveway?
Uh there was not. I have to pull up that site plan to see whether or not there is a guard rail there. I thought there was one shown.
At the last meeting, they said, I brought it up and they said that they would end it. It sounded to me like they didn't have it. Because they had big plans.
Going down the driveway, there's a guard. Yeah, I've never seen. Yeah, okay, it's strong. So there is, it is there.
There is in fact a guard rail there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Uh Jeremy, I uh asked you about the um. The house down below the forty-eight Nashville, which is existing. Um what's happening to that? We never, we all focused on the building. We never talked about the house and how it fits into the affordability plan.
Yes, so I spoke with Attorney Klein on that as well today. By the time that this site is constructed, if approved. Uh it will not be used as a residential structure. It may end up being used as some sort of office or kind of landing pad for any vessel staff. Uh or um a sort of a flexible meeting space for vessel staff and and potential residents, but it will not be used as a residential structure.
So the house of four, the the house of forty-eight will be converted to commercial space?
It it will be converted to some sort of accessory space for the project, yes.
Office, commercial space. Yes, and fifty is being demolished for the driveway, correct?
Correct, fifty is being demolished.
Jeremy, this is Sproul. Did you get my email that's sent to you pertaining to uh number of trucks and damage to the road?
I did, um and I'll 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 and I can let Chuck speak to this a little bit too, but you know, again, I I think that goes back to off-site improvements. And so there is a condition in there that a bond will need to be submitted for any work that goes on in the roadway with regard to connections to sewer and water and drainage. Um and the applicant would need to work with Department of Public Works uh with regard to how much of that gets repaved, but we cannot. Force an applicant to repave a road for truck traffic, especially on a road like Nashville. That takes so much other truck traffic because it's the bypass route for that low bridge on fifty-three.
So what what governs that? You say we cannot. We're talking about hundreds of trucks loaded with. Excavation debris, which is going to accelerate the wear and tear. And our town civil engineering department could say, hey, here's the condition before, here's the condition now. Here's what you need to fix. What prevents us from being able to enforce that?
Wha- what I would say to you is is how how can you uh verifiably say? That the trucks associated with this construction caused the damage when you've got truck traffic as a on a regular basis daily all year long? Uh there's no evidence in the record to suggest that it's hundreds of trucks coming in and out of that site. I don't remember the exact number delivering building materials. It was a relatively low number of of tractor trailers to deliver building materials, but you've got a road. That handles significant truck traffic. I mean, and that was stated by uh residents all along. So again, I think what you would need to rely on is some kind of evidence. That shows that there will in fact be damage to the road, and I think pinpointing it to this project would be next to impossible.
Called common sense.
Ma'am, please, please.
So Jeremy, I have to disagree with you because that's why we have a condi- uh condition assessment. And when we're talking about blasting, excavating and crusher on site. We're not talking about construction materials being delivered to the site. We're talking about material being taken out of the site. And it's very simple to establish, here's the current condition, the day construction opens. Here is the condition when construction or excavation completes. So my question is, is there a legal issue that prevents us from making that a requirement?
Again, I I think discerning uh wear and tear on the road, separate from the standard truck traffic that is on that road already. Is gonna be next to impossible. And I don't know if 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 Chuck can add any flavor to this conversation, but I I don't believe there is a way. That we can make a condition uh that they repave portions of an existing road that they don't own. Um for damage done potentially or or um, you know, sort of assumed to have been done by truck traffic related to their site.
Will you tell us who owns this property currently?
I I like, I can look it up for you.
Because last year I looked at this under contract and that means that that wasn't signed. So my question is whether or not this is dependent upon. Their contract dependent upon us approving this.
Sure.
Mo- most likely that's the case. That's often the case when when uh properties are are for sale or or under contract. I mean, that's kind of a standard way of doing things. You've got a developer who comes in with a project and and the sale doesn't go through until the approval is gained. That's not unusual.
So who is saying that they would sue us if we don't approve this?
They're coming forward with this application, so they would be, you know, just similar to what we just went through on the last, on the Saunders property. Saunders was the applicant who sued the town.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment? It's probably important to differentiate. They don't bring a lawsuit against the town. They just make an appeal of the decision. So it's not like they're coming to the town and getting a, you know, financial win or anything. They literally go to court on appeal. And then the court decides whether it's uh gay. So it's not suing us. It's important differentiation of that.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh we, Sproul, to your point, we we asked, uh you asked how many trucks would come off the site at the uh. Close of the last public hearing. We never got that answer.
Correct.
In in a past public hearing, we got that answer.
We've gotten that answer and given the value that we're talking about. My calculation is somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred, two hundred and fifty trucks. Please remember on fifty-three Taylor, we're talking about seven hundred trucks. Different biography, different situation. Try, they're on fifty-three Taylor, trying to do some balance, cut and fill, uh which we don't know what's being done here. And then the town gets stuck with repairing the roads.
Yeah.
Please keep the comments down, please. We can't have it.
And then Sproul asked about whether or not they were planning on using rock crushers and they said they were. And that's not in here as far as us saying, no, you cannot use rock crushers.
Which is something we've done.
Right.
Yeah, but they can't crush on site and they have, it's more trucks offside, more trucks off.
I I understand.
Still, it it vibrates.
No, I I know.
Well, before we debate the merits of the conditions of approval here, can we go through and and the commission members and? And have commentary?
Sure, you know, that's a, yeah, I'm I'm, that's kind of what we're doing.
All right, no, no, I just didn't know if we were, I mean, it sounded like we were just talking about conditions of approval and I don't know if I'm quite there yet, so.
No, that's absolutely fine. I'm I'm not there yet either. I I have concerns of my own, many.
Hey, Paul.
Sure.
Ken. A couple of general comments today.
Go ahead.
We're here because the legislature of state of Connecticut, as a group, that's why we're here. Any other developer could come in and do this, because those are the rules that they set up. Now, I think it's absolutely horrible that we're put in this position. Having been in this town for sixty years, I can't believe we're here. But. Even if we all both know, just like this previous project here, it took them two years and we lost, we may be there. Maybe in the same scenario, we may both know and they'll be back in Europe in their building. They may even put another floor on there. So that's the dilemma we've got here. It's almost unconstitutional what's happening to the town. General expressions on how I feel about this. It's, it's the state put us here. It's not the developer. And that's our beef, that's my beef. The state put us here and we have, unless we decide to sue the state. We're, we're, we're in this country.
Your work session, please. Eric, Danny?
Um I ne- neither here nor there, I feel like just a general comment. Um. It it's just because you can doesn't mean you should. And I feel like that's that's the refrain that I feel. Uh strikes home with me, project after project, this one included. Um and yeah, it's 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 hard for me and I think for everybody who's here to kind of square. That, right? It seems uh like it's it's always doing, taking every inch without consideration to. Folks in our community and our town and um this is just, this is, just feels like piling on and another example of that, so.
Mike, where do you go?
Uh yeah, I mean, all that sentiment's true. Um nobody here disagrees with that, but. This guy said it's the law and the law states that we have to come up with the burden of proof to say why this should be denied. Uh health and safety, health and safety, health and safety. Uh I see one of the conditions of approval twenty-one speaks to the. People within a thousand feet of the property line that are served by well, quote unquote eligible properties would receive written notice. Um and the offer by the applicant to hook them up to city water. Very nice thing to do. Um but their activities on the site are causing the issue why they would have to hook them up. To their credit, they did the G O T E C report. It showed the levels of of sediment that was in there that could potentially cause issues with wells. I don't see how we're allowed to let somebody else improve a site to meet their needs. And then just say, oh, I'll hook somebody else up. And 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 by the way, it says if they don't. Owners of eligible properties that do not respond to the offer during the applicant acceptance period shall be deemed to have rejected this. So now they have to live with a well that potentially is poisonous, that doesn't sit well with them.
Um please keep comments down.
I think we can't force anybody, nor could they, and that's why they're saying, well, they they declined our offer. Why should we let them have? What they need and not think of our neighbors and everyone else. That's one point.
Yeah.
Um I think wetlands is something that's been overlooked here. Uh I brought it up in the last meeting. I didn't really get a clear answer. I think another commission member has mentioned that he was, he he walked it, paced it off. Anything within a hundred, any site improvements within a hundred feet of wetlands needs to be reviewed. Pace it off, it's right around that number, right to the the front entrance of the site, fifty Nashville Road. Um. G I S kind of shows it. I know it's on the ground system. I know they had a soil scientist go up there back in uh December of last year, twenty twenty-four. And in in December, it's it's, there's no trees, there's no leaves on the trees, there's no bushes, there's no brush. And that soil scientist said, from the property line, there was no evidence of wetlands within hundreds of feet of the property. Well, that's not true. Within about a hundred, there is. So I think that should have been investigated. Now, I do know that our staff directed them that that wasn't something to be concerned with. And I get it, our staff's trying to do as best they can. That's why we're here as elected people to kind of put, push, push back and say, hey, we didn't really get a good look at that. So I think there's wetlands. Now, forty-eight Nashville, thank you for bringing that up. There's gonna be site improvements there, and that is within a hundred feet of that broke across the street. And it's been very vague about what they are going to do there. Is it gonna be apartments? We're getting an answer now. Yes, no, not sure. They mentioned. Amenities for their 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 uh tenants in one of its previous meetings. That would be site improvements there. They could put an office in that house, but I guarantee you they're gonna improve that site. So I have a concern, that's within a hundred feet. It's at the very least, it should be looked at from our wetlands commission. And it should be on the burden of them to prove that they are not within that. We've done it with other applicants. Far away, we, two, two, two properties away, we we eight thirty G, we've gone back to them and said, hey, there's wetlands issues here that we have to take a look at. I don't see why, you know, and then and on top of that, the previous applicants at least extended the application period for us. To then observe this, or at least have, give them the opportunity to respond. They decided to be good neighbors and shut the meeting down. Not allow us to set a sidewalk, which I think is a health and safety thing. We should be able to go up on that site and see what's up there. Not just across the street, but what's up there? What are we, what are we doing? Where are we? Every eight thirty G application that I've been a part of, we've had a sidewalk. I've only been doing this for two years. Applicant said we could have set that at the beginning. Well, historically, we've always done it at the second meeting. What happened? They decided not to show it at the second meeting. They took that away from us. All their responses were dated prior to that second meeting, and they said they were waiting on something else. I didn't see any other responses that were. Aided after that second meeting, so I don't buy that. I get it, that's not health and safety, that's just perception, and that's what I don't like, but. That was standing, I think the wetlands needs to be looked at. I think the wells, we should not be allowing other neighbors to be affected by this well. Uh issue. Um and for that reason, I'd be a no, and I'm not even looking at the rest of it.
I agree with everything that Mike has had to say. Um my concern is that excuse that we were not allowed. To do a sidewalk, which they said we could do in May or something. We didn't open the public hearing at that point, so. You know, and and in looking at the police, uh the police letter of July twenty-first. Um they had already been to the police and the police did not approve this, and they had many concerns. And so I feel that they shut it down and didn't come because of that. We didn't get a choice to be able to speak again and have questions and have answers. Um we didn't even have a possibility of of having our own expert look at things, because this is the fastest. Project, I think, that that has ever been. Maybe you can speak to that, but I don't think that two different times of them. Coming before us with us having questions and us having an opportunity to check property is enough. And it makes me question it. Um and you know, there was a whole lot of information that was. Questions that were were by the professional engineer that was from our town that wrote the letter. That make me question the whole project and why, why it has to be so quick. Um and it makes me think that they don't want us to look at it or anything. So um and then the uh these plans that are, you know, the newest plans, I don't know legally. Whether they really have the option to say, pick this now or we're here stuck with this other thing. I don't know legally if Charles can can talk to that or not, but. pick this now or we're here stuck with this other thing. I don't know legally if Charles can can talk to that or not, but you know, we were told that they didn't have the the authority to tell us that we could walk the property when Kitty asked a question at the one at the meeting, because they weren't the owners. And so, but you're representing the owners and I don't understand. It just doesn't make any sense.
We cannot go on property without the written consent.
That's right.
And the applicant would acquire that from the seller of the property, just tell those, right?
So that puts us in a position where we, our hands are tied. We can't even check the property. Um, and, you know, the retaining wall, you know, being as high as it is, I don't even really have an understanding of where that is in relation to the other apartment building. Um, they added the fence after I brought it up at the last meeting. Um, it just seems to me that that's a safety issue. And, um, you know, we have all the pictures of of Nashville flooding and that's a safety issue. I mean, maybe it's resisting. So my question is, and maybe Chuck Chuck can explain it to us. What? They say parking can't be a safety issue, even though people would have to truck from some other place, or they don't have enough parking. You know, there's no place for anybody to to, um, you know, green space or any place for anybody who lives there to use. There's no, um,
Sidewalk down the drive.
No sidewalk down the driveway for children going down, which I'm sure because it's so steep would be very dangerous and they'd have to make sure they stand it just like the road. Um,
Well, it's actually too steep of a great roadside.
Probably, that's probably another reason. So, and the 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 police brought that up and, um, I just, there's a lot of, lot of things that may get unsafe as far as I'm concerned. Um, you know, you would need Chuck to explain to us, you know, what is, what would be considered. It seems like like the judges are just ignoring fire, they're ignoring parking. They're ignoring, you know, the environment, having something that might be a carcinogen or whatever. I and then the other question is the fire, the material that they're using. Um, I think is questionable. Is it, is it a carcinogen for firefighters that they have to deal with the deal with a fire there? How do they get to the top of the roof from the back with the stand ladders? How can they be that tall, the stand ladders? I would be concerned about that for the firefighters. Now, we can ask our people, you know, fire chief about that, because they said that they could have stand ladders, but to me, that just seems unsafe. So I I have a lot of concerns.
Diane, back to your point of just condition of approval about whether you can do that or not. I get it. Trying to negotiate it, but one that really pisses me off is, do this now or we're going to make this building white.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think.
That's that's not being a good neighbor.
No, and I don't think.
Right, I agree.
I don't even know if that's legal. I don't even know if that's legal.
Yeah.
So that's that's a question for Chuck to say, you know, either you do this or and and it's got to be this date or we're going to appeal. I mean, I don't.
Chatter down, please.
If if I can jump in on that, it it's not, it's not do it by this date or we're going to appeal. The application is four or five. I just want to, I want to put this out there and straighten this out, because I think there's been a lot of confusion about this. The application is a five-story building with seventy-five units. Nine of those units are two bedrooms, the others are one bedroom. That's the application. The applicant has said that they are willing to accept as a condition of approval a four-story building consisting of seventy-two units, three of which are two-bedroom and the other sixty-nine are one-bedroom, but they would only be willing to accept that as a condition of approval by, you know, within sort of a shortened timeframe, right? You have sixty-five days to deliberate after you close the hearing. They would prefer not to use the entire sixty-five days because of weather issues and whatever the fall and winter are approaching. So it's not that, it's not do it or we're going to appeal it. You have it, you have a timeline. They've requested a shortened timeline, which you can do, uh, and they've requested that if you're going to include that condition of approval with a slightly smaller building, you do that more quickly than the sixty-five days that statute allows you to do. That said, if you, if you want to go ahead and and use your sixty-five days and then you still include the four-story seventy-two unit, um, uh, condition, they will appeal that condition because they're not, they're not going to agree to it, because it's not life and safety related. It is, that's more of an aesthetic bulk issue. And and, you know, I I understand the concerns from the neighbors, I understand the concerns from the commission, I get it. Uh, but the reality is that conditions that get placed on the uh, on the approval have to be sort of a a worked out. Uh, you know, they've got to be worked out with the applicant, and if they're not, then they have to be reasonable and they have to be tied to health and safety concerns. So I hope that sort of clarifies that piece of.
Do you read out what he said for all meetings?
No, no, I I.
The meeting, what he said, that's very difficult, what he's saying.
Yeah. Please, please keep the chatter down, trying to work. Well, did you have something more to add?
It's it's an insignificant point, but it's something that we need to consider when a developer comes in and says, oh, well, I'll I'll hook the neighbors up to the public water service. So I'm sitting there as a as a neighbor, I got my well, and now you're going to mess it up. And now you hook me up to a public utility, then I have to pay someone.
Right.
I'm paying for water now for no one else. I gotta pay.
Right.
For your benefit.
Don't worry, their property value's going up.
Please, please keep the comments down, please, please, please.
I I I don't think there is a member in this commission that has something positive to say about this. And and this umbrella statement, we want to be good neighbors. You're not being good neighbors.
Well, that's my points. Uh, I agree with, uh, everything that's been said by everyone on the court. Um, my hangups, uh, the big hang is I'm concerned about the wetlands. Uh, I agree this should have been reviewed, in my opinion. Uh, I'm not a surveyor, but I I think it's within. Um, this whole
Close enough to look at.
This whole forty-eight Nashville and now learning tonight it's becoming a commercial building. Uh, it just dawned on me today.
Is it selling for commercial?
No, no.
It's it just dawned on me today that we've been.
They're just going to sit there right away.
Well, we we've been so concentrated on the the big building that we forgot about the house in the front that's existing, that's stayed.
Oh, yes.
But it's supposed to be, if it's part of the project, that has to be included in the affordability plan. Then that's when I I called Jeremy this afternoon and said, hey, Jeremy, I don't remember seeing that included anywhere. Um, and now we're finding out it's going to be turned into commercial space.
And not for the, not for the people.
It's commercial space, it's office space, you just said it's going to be office space.
And it wouldn't be for the people who are living in.
That has nothing.
I don't know, it could be.
So if I, so if I can jump in on that just a little bit, um, it it, you know, it's not going to, there are no definitive plans as to what.
Bingo, you just said it, there's no definitive plans. How are we supposed to approve something? We don't know the definitive plans.
So so let me, if you would, just let me finish.
Blank check.
But let me finish that thought. What you could do is you could can, you could add a condition of approval related to forty-eight Nashville that it remain vacant until such time as the application come back, or the applicant comes back to the commission for an additional approval for the future use of that building. So it would protect you in that there would be no exterior improvements over there, which I I agree with Mike. I think portions of forty-eight are are very likely to be within a hundred feet of the nearby wetland. That is not true of the existing proposal. Um, it, but it would, it would prevent any future use of that until they came back to you for a different approval. And it would have to be somewhat related to the, um, the the proposed use that they're that they're showing currently. So we can, we can, you know, massage, we can massage a a condition related to that.
Yeah, but Jeremy, forty-eight is part of this application.
Still part of the application.
And and they don't, they can't do this, looking at the site plan and how the driveway works without forty-eight. It just doesn't. It it touches the corner of forty-eight. I'm sorry, that there's, there's not clarity.
It it, right, and they need forty-eight to do the driveway, that's correct. But what what we're talking about right now is the rest of that site. So what you've got on paper is what they plan to do. And right now, they're not showing any other improvements on forty-eight. They're leaving the building where it is. They're not touching the driveway and all of that. So uh, what I'm saying is you could, you know, make, you can make a condition that that site remain, you know, in in compliance with the with the existing proposed use and the building remain vacant not to be used until such time that an additional application comes in. So there's ways we can deal with that is what is what I'm saying.
So so if we approve this, we're kicking people out of their house also.
Uh, I I I don't know what the status of that currently is. Um, I don't think you are kicking people out of the house. The property's for sale. There's probably some sort of language agreement already in place.
But the house could sit for five to ten years and have nothing done to it. Is that what you're saying?
It it could, yeah, it could.
I don't.
I I want to read.
Uh, this is, this is, it's a blank check, Jeremy. I mean, I almost, you're asking me to approve something with twenty-three conditions that, sure, take care of some things. And 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 I get it, it's an eight thirty G and and I I I I I was, I I've been on the fence, to be honest with you, and I'm telling this to commissioners. I'm sitting here like, do we, do we deny this application and then leave it up to the courts and then throw all these, um, all these out the window, right? And then we're stuck with the five-story building that's white and they get all these things and some judge in Hartford decides what what we what we can and can't do. And then we're going to be in the same story we just were in a little while ago, where we're forced to to vote yes on something. So part of me is sitting here like, you know, they 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 threw us the tiniest of bones with dropping a couple of units in in the color, which is a joke.
Adding a couple of spots to park.
A couple, a handful of spots to park. And and I'm like, well, you know, do we take the deal and move forward?
No, no.
Because guys, guys, please, this, I'm talking to my commission members here. This is, this is what I'm thinking, right? We we spend the town's money to fight this to end up losing anyways, because that's where, or do you, or do you, I mean, I live on Nashville Road, right? I drive down this road every day. Uh, I I deal with the traffic. Uh, there's times I can't get out of my driveway. Uh, so and then you have these engineers that tell you there's no traffic.
No traffic.
Right, right, right. I mean, you stop there with serious face, looking in the eyes, there's no traffic. I'm like, dude. Um, but the but the thing that really bothers me i- is is the 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 three wells, and I point blank asked during the public hearing to identify those three wells, and they wouldn't. They have them, they know who they are, but they wouldn't. Though that neighbor, those three neighbors could be sitting in this room right now, not knowing that we're discussing that their water potentially could be undrinkable if we approve this. But don't worry, the applicant has offered to hook them up to public water. But if they don't respond in time, if they're out of town and they don't get the letter, you're up, you're you're up shit's creeped. It's a joke. It's an absolute joke. And and I I'm, I I I've never, I've never been treated like this. I I can't believe we're being treated like this. I'm appalled. Um, disgusting, disgusting, yeah, just so much incomplete information that's been railroaded through. And and it just, I I can't approve a blank check. I can't, I can't approve it. Please, 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 please keep the pause down. But I can't approve a blank check. I I don't know what I'm approving. I don't know what I'm proving. What, well, they're going to come back in a few years and maybe we're going to make some units in the front building? Are they going to be affordable or are we going to rent that for huge money because it's a house? I I I don't know. We don't know. That's never been explained to us. We don't know if these three people's wells are going to be drinkable. I enjoy my well water. I think it tastes great. I don't want to get in city water. I I I just.
Are they going to pay in perpetuity with these people?
Right. I I just, there's so much unknown. And we asked for, we asked, we asked for a continuance. We all had, I mean, I have pages of notes and questions from both all of us in the public that asked, and we never got answers for them, other than the ex-.
Jeremy, who owns the land today, right now? Who owns the land?
Oh, uh, the land is on, I had that up just a moment ago when you asked, um, it is owned by Francis Oldham J.
Attorney?
Jay.
Francis, yeah, Jay Oldham, Francis J. Oldham the fourth.
All the land in this, in this project is owned by that entity.
Yes.
And they, and what is?
That is correct.
What's the status of them with vessel?
Sure, there's, sure, there's a contract in place.
But we don't know what that is. I I would think.
That's not for us.
It doesn't really matter to the application process.
But whether or not.
If this gets approved all by the land.
Well, that's how these all work. This is how every development works. You don't, you put your offer on contingent on it. And then guess what? After a certain amount of time, if it gets extended, your money goes hard. And you lose your money as an applicant. That's what happens.
As an applicant too, for the, for their.
There's a deposit on it, right? I'm going to give you X amount of dollars down to say, here's, hold this in an Astro account. I'm going to, I'm going to get this approved, and when it does, I'll buy it. The seller says, hey, you've only got ninety days to to get this approved. Otherwise, I'm going to find somebody else. Or your money goes hard, meaning that deposit is non-refundable. I don't know the situation of this, we're speculating, but that's what, that's how transactions.
But it makes me feel like, like there is a reason.
Well, listen, again, health and safety, that has nothing to do with it.
True. Yeah, it just speaks to the type of neighbor they want to be.
Right.
So attorney, how broad is the definition of of health when it comes to eight thirty G?
Um, um, the the language, health, safety are the matters that the commission can reasonably consider.
Yeah, but what, so how, health is, how is that considered in the eyes of the court? What, I mean, what do they talk about when when they consider health?
They don't consider anything.
Well, if if you look at the cases where the towns have won, which frankly, particularly in recent years, have been very few. I mean, there have been some issues regarding, uh, wastewater septic issues that are sometimes have have been, at least historically. Um, fire safety has been raised, although it's rarely successful. Um, traffic is sometimes raised, but again, that's rarely successful.
Okay.
Um.
But how do we address the appi- application as being incomplete?
Yeah.
I mean, how do, how are we being asked, put in the position to approve an application that's incomplete?
Can I ask, can I ask what you think is incomplete about the application? I mean, you've got a full site plan, you've got, you've got engineering reports, you've got.
Forty-eight Nashville.
Well, I don't think the application is incomplete with regard to forty-eight Nashville. They show you what the proposed improvements are and they're and they're telling you we're not tearing the building down, we're just going to leave it there for now.
But but I, again, but you 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 just spoke, you would just said, Jeremy, that you spoke to them, they might turn it into apartments. That that or it might.
No, 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 nope. They never said anything about apartments at forty-eight. They said that they will not turn it into a residential unit.
So again, so then how does eight thirty G allow them to turn a residential building into a commercial building?
It doesn't. I, that would be a separate application and that would not be an eight thirty G application.
And we're not allowed to have commercial buildings within the zone.
So so again, so how does, how does that?
The application as it stands is is for that building to simply exist. If they want to come back in and use it as some kind of accessory to the larger residential building uphill, be it a a a, you know, sort of a meeting space for vessel or whatever the case may be, they would need to come back into you uh, for that, and then we would have to run it through the application process and have that conversation.
That's, that's what I think. And also, if it is a commercial office space, there's parking requirements that go with commercial space. That's not drawn up.
Right, because right now there are no plans for that building. It's going to sit there.
I'm not, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And guys, this is staff.
I know.
He's trying to do the best job he can. He's trying to give you facts and only facts.
No, I understand. I'm not angry at Jeremy.
But just, we we got to like bring it down a notch with our staff. That's not fair.
No, I I, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, looks like we have a pretty good list of things that are health and safety.
Grievances?
Yeah, maybe we should start making that list and either do it today or the next meeting. Just to stop.
Mr. Lengner, what do you have? We're sitting there very patiently.
Okay, I I I still have safety concerns based on the the sidewalk up and down. Kids walking in the driveway, adults walking in the driveway, up and down to to Nashville Road to meet someone. There's no, I I I'm not saying they can put a sidewalk in there physically, but I think one would be needed. And also, uh, I have the same concerns that some people have over, you know, are we encroaching on the wetlands by using both pieces of property? And are we, uh, forcing someone to give up their right to uh, have well water? And are we uh forcing someone to give up their right to uh uh have well water? Without their permission, or without their input, as far as we've gone so far. Uh, a lot of what we've discussed tonight here, we could have discussed if we had gotten the thirty-day extension. But, yeah, we we are 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 still discussing things that should have been cleared up before we closed the hearing. But we we couldn't because we were forced into it. And I agree with Kitty, we we could have had a sidewalk, would have, would have been a help to get, just. Sometimes it it does well to get out on your feet and get the lay of the land. So, in the, in that case, I I think there are still safety issues that could be solved. Or or can't be solved, and and it should stop the project. I'm not saying, you know, we would win this if we deny it. Nobody can guarantee that. But I think, you know, if if we deny it, sometimes you have to just draw a line in the sand and say, you know. They're 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 forcing us to make a decision. Based on, you know, take this or take that, but you know, it's it's like, you know, the guy that says he'd still beat your wife, there's no good answer to it. So, you know, we, you know, we, we need to, we need to look at it from that standpoint. There's going to be no good solution to this, there's not going to be a solution that makes everybody happy. We have a company that's coming here trying to act like Mr. Rogers, and I want to be part of the neighborhood. But they're not giving us a product that's going to be proud in that neighborhood.
We have, um.
Time to think about this and talk about it, frankly.
Can we ask Jeremy? On projects, don't they really give what the, what the materials are? Because this is a different type of building than we've ever had, that are supposed to be fireproof material and everything else. I I think, you know, it was brought up that other towns have been concerned about those things. Um, that's not something we have information on, and so that could be a concern, a safety concern of those materials. That are not typically.
It can be, and and I'm just playing devil's, that that's usually something that's determined with a code review, and that's at the building permit application phase. They still have to meet codes, and I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate that, I also just don't know if that's. Enough to say, hey, no, we can't do this, because it's not up to us, that's, that's a building code.
Right, but they included it in other applications, and then they didn't include it for us, so they knew it could be a problem possibly.
If I can just jump in on that, I I, and I know that that has been a concern in a number of communities, I know, I think it came up in West Hartford, I think it's come up in a few. You did hear testimony from a code expert, Joe Verstee came, and I think he spoke to you in person, if my memory is correct, and I know we have a letter from him. Um, and Joe is a, is an expert on Connecticut, both, both the fire and the building codes, he's been involved in the, in the Codes and Standards Committee at the state level. He's, he's pretty well-regarded um across the state. Um, that being said, you know, the the Planning and Zoning Commission, your, your purview is, right, it's planning and zoning. You have a building official, you have a fire marshal, um, they can take those building plans and refer those out to further experts. Um, who may be even more well-versed in some of those materials, and yes, you're right, there's some proprietary materials, I believe, included in the application. Um, but but, you know, and and I speak for myself, and I think I speak for probably the majority of you as well. We're just not well-versed in that to make those types of decisions, so you have to look at the site and the use, and then let the code experts take a look at it from there. They have to meet building and fire code, eight thirty G does not get them around that, and they have to meet the health code, it does not get them around that either. So, if in the process of review, the building and the fire marshal find that there's something about it that doesn't meet code. It doesn't get a permit and doesn't get, you know, doesn't move forward until they meet code.
So they will give a complete set of drawings, because we.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, no, no different than any other application that goes before the building and fire marshals, or the building official and the fire marshal.
Hey, it's up to you, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, Jeremy, did you look at at all of these concerns that were, were brought up by the professional engineer that lives in our town?
I went through, I went through that list, uh, I submitted that over to the, you know, I made sure that the applicant was aware of it. Uh, the vast majority, again, are building and fire code-related and not under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were a few things that were brought up, um, and I, and if I'm memory surfing, I don't have the list in front of me at the moment, but. Uh, there were a few things that were brought up that I thought were legitimate P and Z issues, but had sort of been resolved in the, in the, or addressed in the process of. Um, uh, of of revising the plan.
Hey Chuck, you still on? I have a, just a quick question, I think I know the answer to, but I just want to make sure I'm correct. If, when we're talking eight thirty G and we're talking health and safety. If the construction or building of an application affects the health and safety of just one person. That's, that's enough to say no. We're not talking, I'm not saying like, if health and safety doesn't mean like the general town. If we're saying it affects one family's house, that's enough to say no.
You mean one house in the development, or one apartment?
One neighbor that potentially is going to have their well water poisoned, and then. Might not get the opportunity to get hooked up to well water, or to to city water, or whatever the the case may be. But who's to say they have to, like, why are we forcing them to have? Again, that's my whole, that's my whole thing.
Good question, Paul.
What what's the line, is is, yeah, is is one development, is one person important enough?
Okay, so you're asking if if one property, not, you know, what one, one lots, the well on one lot would be affected, is there evidence?
No, because they didn't provide, they just said there's three wells that have the potential to be contaminated. By their construction, but never identified them.
And they just brought it up last, at the last meeting, so we didn't, we didn't even hear about it.
So, a- again, huge health and safety. So, I I I don't know, I I'm. I I think we continue this to.
Yeah, I agree.
Next public hearing, uh, which is a regular scheduled public hearing on September twenty-third. No, no, work session, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Chuck, can you, by the next time, just kind of dive into that question that that Paul just proposed, and 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 see if we have an answer on that?
Sure, I I have not reviewed the record in this case, I I have not been involved, but I should probably.
I'll give you a call this week and 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 we'll, we'll chat. So we're going to continue this, um, uh, work session to our next public hearing, or I'm sorry, our next regular scheduled meeting on September twenty-third. Um, excellent, so we'll move on to number six, our planners report. Uh, Jeremy, you have something for us on the eight thirty G moratorium?
Yeah, I gave you, I just gave you some written comments, you know, a- and it's sort of the same comments that I've given you before, we continue to work on it. Um, finding, you know, I I, you know, I I know everybody's reaction is frustration with this thing, and I get it, because my reaction with this thing is frustration as well. Um, we're dealing with twenty-five years' worth of information, we're dealing with twenty-five years of record-keeping, we're dealing with. Uh, a law that has changed within that twenty-five years, um, and we are. Struggling with some of the backup documentation, um, we need to verify that all of the, uh, the, all of the, uh, projects are compliant. Um, we are working our way through that process. Um, we have affordability plans that were written, you know, in some cases fifteen years ago, that. Maybe aren't quite up to snuff to what we're looking for in today's world. Um, I've met with Melanie, I spent half a day with her, I think a week ago, I planned to meet with her, or Mel, I'm sorry, the the town attorney. Uh, I plan to be down there in the office again this coming Monday to go through these things. The good thing is, as I've, as I've stated before, we. It 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 appears, and I'm pretty certain we have enough housing, you, you, um, housing unit equivalency points. So it's not about the points, I think we, I think we're there, it's about the backup documentation, we need to make sure that all our Ts are dotted, are crossed, all our Is are dotted. Before we submit an application, because if we submit an application that's not. You know, fully fleshed out, then we've wasted even more time, so, you know, can I, can I give you a timeline? I I really, we we are working as quickly as we possibly can, there's just, there's documentation that we need that is proving to be very difficult to get our hands on. Um, we're getting there, I think we have a process. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for Monday to kind of figure out a process that we can use going forward to make sure that all of these. Set-aside developments remain compliant in the future, um, but you know, we're dealing, we're dealing with history here and and. You know, it 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 is what it is, it's nobody's fault, it's just, um, it's an evolution and and, you know, people learn as they go, so. We'll get there, I'm confident that we'll get there, it's just, it's just taking more time than we thought it would to to provide the documents that we need to provide.
Jeremy, this is screw. Is this, and I recognize everybody's busy, everybody's got a full-time job, and this is an added one, is this a resource issue?
No, no, it is, it is, it is a documentation issue. Um, there are, there are documents that, uh, were done incorrectly fifteen, twenty years ago, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, that were submitted incorrectly. That we need to now catch up, uh, eh, with developers and get those corrected. We need to go through, there were, you know, there should be deed restrictions, there are certain developments where the deed restrictions were not included. We have to verify that those have been corrected and included, it it truly is a documentation issue, so isn't it?
I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, go ahead.
If if we had two other planners, assigned exclusively to this, would we get there any faster?
I I can't, I can't say that you necessarily would, maybe, maybe a little bit faster.
Because instead of having one planner going to one owner, to one developer, to one attorney at a time, now we have three going out. In a shotgun approach.
Yeah, I I mean, again, you know, it's, it's, it's taken time to even figure out what it is that we need. Um, you know, the other thing is, we're running, everything needs to run through the town attorney. Um, and, you know, th- this is not her only, this is not her only task either, so. She's, this is on her front burner, and and like I said, we're working as quickly as we can.
What I'm saying is, this is, this is Melanie's top priority, given her a firm to offload a lot of her stuff to. But this is a monumental task, it's years of paperwork that's not been done correctly. Right, so they're going back, and some of this we've got to rely on developers to get the information back to us. So I don't think it's much of a resource that problem we're in, so by the way, we can get another attorney. The town planner is unfortunately hard to come up with. Right, there are many, I can get another attorney who's done this a lot easier than town planners, I have no problem doing that if Melanie feels like they need that resource. This is the number one priority to get drunk, and right now, I think part of this is we've got to rely on what the developers can get back to us. Because we've got to go back and find these folks and say, hey, can you, can you fix this affordability? Can you, you know, you got the CO here, but you got the wrong number of units, so you didn't do the annual form here, like, there's a lot of this to make these units count. That that's what, so just understand that.
What's the impetus for the developers to react to this, is there like, uh, fine if they don't have this correctly?
I'm not sure, because this is the first time anybody's ever gone through this, I mean, I know with a couple of them, they might be very willing to work with us, because. They want to do things in the future, I don't know.
No, no, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying strong on them, I'm just, I'm just curious, what's the impetus for them saying, I'm. Why am I going to work with this, and the owners are going to bring that up, yes, again, you know, I do have that experience with, with the Fort Worth Housing, and you do have to. You have to submit this stuff yearly to.
I guess what happens if you don't? That's my issue, right, I don't know where.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, I don't know what firm I can put on it yet, like, this is, I mean, granted, this is the first time I've been down this track, but I'll tell you what, Bethel has been there before, because. In two thousand and five, we presented it in the application, so we've been down this before, like, we need to get this all together. And to Jeremy's point, I think we're working really hard, not only on finding what went wrong before, but taking everything in our pipeline now and fixing it. Right, because remember, the most important thing is we fix what we've got now in the pipeline, to make sure we're doing it all by the numbers correctly, so. I I just want to say, we we're fighting the battle, we we've got the resources, if we need more attorneys on it, or planners or whoever, probably attorneys. I'm 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 happy to do that from the, from our perspective.
And then I can tell you from, from where I sit at the chair, uh, I'm in his ear at least a few times a week. Uh, and Jeremy and I speak at least once a week, if not more, and this is usually one of the first things we talk about.
And and this is, this is.
So it's not something that's getting forgotten about.
And and I think until you apply for the, until we've applied for this, is when it all kind of blew up, what? So these are things we're just going back, we're fixing, um, I I think it's Jeremy's fault, we're not seeing, or Jeremy's point, it's not everybody's fault, we're just going back and saying, all right. We want to make sure we're documenting these things correctly.
And I think by design, it's not easy to. By design, it's not easy.
And the important thing the commission should always remember too, is this is actually for everybody. Moratorium is much different than the ten percent rule, right? We are five-point-three percent in this town, we used to fix, we're never going to achieve ten percent, I think Danbury even has a challenge. The moratorium is based on housing unit equivalent, a Hugh points. We're pretty close, I think, like he says, I think we've got the numbers there, the question is, can we make them all stick? And that is, that is the big piece of this, so, uh, they're working diligently. Um, I mean, we're, I'm kind of like, fighting the battle for these guys, and if we need more resources, I'll do it.
Jeremy, when I spoke earlier, and I agreed with him, when he said that we need to make sure our Ts are crossing, I I don't want to waste time in a, we don't. There's no, there's nothing that says how long the state is going to take to review this, so, I don't want to submit this, and then find out six months from now. Hey, this one was no good, try again. Yeah, right, because then we've wasted six months while we're waiting.
Because that's what happened last time.
I'd rather just take the extra month or two now, make sure it's perfect and submit it.
Agree with that.
I'm as frustrated as you guys, as everyone is.
What can be done to accelerate the process? Because three weeks from now, we will be sitting here with a brand-new eight-thirty G application.
Very right.
And although the moratorium is only good for a very limited number of years, it gives us a chance to see what else we can do.
Gives us a chance to breathe.
So I'm, I'm behind a search for what can we do to help the process, more, more resources in the form of. Of professionals, what?
And and they have a, listen, we've got good people working on this, they they even asked for more resources that way, I mean. Melanie, I basically, or her town attorney, sorry, town attorney, I basically gave them a firm, and I said, Melanie, do everything you can to work in the firm. Offload as much as you can, this is your number one priority, firm's doing great, they're reviewing contracts for us and doing some setup, this is her number one thing. And if she needs more, this firm, I believe, would have folks could, a well-recognized firm, doing municipal stuff, you know, land use, you name it. I I think they're on the right stuff, but we'll, we'll keep fighting the battle on, and stay on me too, because I'm, I'm glad to talk every day about this, because it's the most important thing for me as well. I hate seeing this happen in my.
I I feel like, personally, I'm at the point where I kind of am.
One second, Jeremy, are you upset with your planners report?
Yeah, that's, that's really all I've got.
All right, all right, so, commission comments, Eric, I just wanted, I did, we kind of went off on.
One quick question, I think, is where you're going to go. Is is there some documentation at some point we could share with the commission to actually see?
Yeah, I just want some actionable steps, I feel like, uh, what we, honestly, and and I. I get we're trying to be kind, but I think the message needs to be pedal to the metal, let's get it done. And not make excuses, and let's see some progress, and I I guess that's maybe speaking on behalf, I'm maybe just myself, but maybe some other people.
I would assign metrics to this if I could.
Yeah, but, so, so what can that look like? Figure that out, yeah. So what has been done, how about that, since we met last? What has been accomplished, can you report back on what you've, what you've, what boxes you've checked since we talked about this in August? I mean, to me, I feel like that, that's important.
Sure, I I mean, we, I I can certainly do that, I can let you know what the steps are that we've taken from, you know, a couple of weeks to, you know, meeting by meeting. I mean, I could tell you in the last couple of weeks, again, you know, Melanie and I met, um, I learned about a couple of additional eight-thirty Gs that were out there, that were not in the original counts. So we've done the Huey points on those, uh, I've researched out those deeds, gotten those affordability plans, made sure that the deeds have the deed restrictions in them. Um, uh, found out who the affordable administrator is, some of those are your town administrator, Mark Nolan, some of them are not. Um, so we've, you know, we're, we're, we're actively and constantly looking and inserting that documentation, so again, I'm meeting with Melanie on Monday. Um, and I will compile all that information that I've got, give it to her, and and and, you know, some of it is, she goes, so. So some, some of the way this has worked is, is we meet, I provide her with a bunch of information that I've found, she tells me what she's found, we collaborate. Then she goes back and reviews and and comes back to me with a new list of of sort of problems, if you will, and things that we need to find, and so. Um, I don't always know what it is that we're looking for until we have the opportunity to kind of dig and and figure it out. We did get a list from the state of sort of the metrics that they look for. sort of the metrics that they look for in an application. So we received, I, I got that, um, a week and a half ago roughly. Um, and so at least now I know for each app or for each, um, housing development, what it is that they are specifically looking for. So that gives us an actual target of, okay, these are the documents that we need to, that we need to have. Before that, we were sort of flying blind saying, okay, well, we need to know that we, you know, we need the affordability plan. We need the, um, you know, uh, uh, verification that they're compliant. And we need to know that the deeds are, the deed restrictions are in place. And so we kind of had those three things for each of the developments. There's a couple of other small, you know, small things that we need to be getting a hold of. We have a lot of it. Um, it's just that, like I said, those older developments are, are hard to wrap your head around. And when you open up the folders um, from some of those older files, it's a crapshoot as to what's going to be in there.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? No. Bob, you anything?
I'm good.
I, I got a couple of things, Paul. Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I feel like I just, I, I want to check off the list. Um, I'm, I'm going to, I feel like it was nice to see a full room of people. I feel like all the folks that have remained here, uh, and, and I see some very familiar faces, but know that we do this twice a month and having people in seats matters. And I think it's a really good, healthy thing to have people come out. Not just when there's a big ticket item that, that everyone, uh, wants to address, but, but other times too, you know, we have applications coming in every time we meet and, uh, and it's, it's good to see people here. Um.
To piggyback that, there are applications that come in and that are bringing business into town. Really good applications that are people investing the right way in this town. I think that's, that's really important too. And I think seeing, seeing that, yeah, the, the full spectrum of stuff that's going on. Yeah. I think some folks talked about it before during the public input section about, about business. And I think, you know, tonight was not that, but, but that doesn't mean it doesn't happen. So uh, keep, keep showing up. I also feel like the, the gentleman, I'm going to forget his last name. I wrote it down here. Mr. Chen, I think.
Uh, was talking about how, you know, we, we, I think, you know, I'm speaking for everybody here. Are the, are your voices, right? And, um, and we take that seriously, but also really encourage anybody to get involved in the process. And he was like, we're coming, we're coming for your seats. I was like, yeah. Bees. Um, so that's, yeah, please know that, that we're not taking that as a threat at all. In fact, that, that makes me feel like people are invested in our town. That's really nice to see. Um, uh, something for Mr. First Selectman and our commissioner, um, when I get to this in kind of a backdoor way. Uh, some of the public input was, what do we do for work? Right? And I think someone wanted to know like what, who, who on the, on the board are developers and who have uh, that kind of background. Um, so, uh, I'll, I'll tell you this and no one else, I need to feel compelled. But I'm telling you, this is my way of getting just to a general point. Um, I'm a public educator and I work in special education. And, um, and part of my job is, uh, you know, we make legal documents for students with disabilities, right? IEPs. And, uh, there are times when we are putting together those documents with families that families choose to bring a, a lawyer or an attorney to, to a meeting. And our practice, bar none, is when that happens, we have our district attorney represent the school district during those meetings. So here's my backdoor way of bringing this up, right? I feel like we need to make sure that when we have meetings, public hearings where applicants are bringing their attorneys, that we are equally and duly represented by ours. And, and I think that that includes our, our staff, right? Um, and again, not speaking in particular about anything, any specific, uh, public hearing, but I feel like there's been some times where it's just the commissioners that are showing up. And this is not, this is not my area of expertise, right? But it is theirs. And I feel like if we show up to these public hearings without that, that is very problematic. So I don't know if that's something that's broken in terms of our process, like if we have to go and request, uh, Attorney Andrews to, to come to meetings or if that's just something that is automatically added to his calendar. But whatever it is, what, whether it's us bringing it up here and planning for our next public hearings or it's something that goes on behind the scenes, I just want to make sure that that's addressed because, um, we need to be represented too.
Um, that's a good point though. We always plan our future public hearing. So maybe that's a time when we as a commissioner can discuss.
Right. And actually, it was actually beat me to it, but, um, I starred that from this, uh, excuse me, Jan Gagnit.
Yes.
Gunn, yeah, yeah, 60 Whitmer Wall. She had wrote down, um, we, I'm sorry, Jane, I'm sorry. You know, do we have the money to hire attorneys? And I, I started that. Now as a question I was going to ask you, um, is that something that we can do? And, and to your point, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you. You know, a lot of times applicants are coming in here loaded for bear and, and we're not. Um, and, and then, I mean, just, just as, uh, Attorney Andrews said earlier, he's, he's not familiar with the application now. Um, and, and we're, he's going to catch us. So.
I'll, I could work with the Board of Selectmen on that, the Board of Finance and talk about it.
Make it a line item because.
Yeah. Well, it, it.
It might save us money in the long term.
We have a budget that we go over every year.
Right.
Um, but I, I can work with not only the planner, of course, like then try to figure out what we want to do.
Because I mean.
Public hearings. I think it's a great idea. And we're willing to try to support the commission. That's the town's job.
Well, of course, but in, in like, uh, correct me if I'm wrong here. Um, and this application is closed and settled now, so I'm going to bring it up. The Whitney Road cost the town almost a hundred thousand dollars to litigate.
Probably around that. It was around 77,000 just in legal fees and then there's.
Right. And, and I mean, uh, so, and, and you know, I, I understand lawyers have jobs to do, but maybe we, instead of spending that money on the backend, fighting it in court, we spend the money in the frontend and make sure we're making the correct decision in the front, have a legal representation of like, hey, guys, don't deny this. It's a loser. You're gonna, you know, let's work with the applicant to some point. Some applicants, I mean, we've had 830Gs in here where the applicants are very willing to work with the town. Um, and we've had others where they're not. So, I mean, it might be something, it might be something worth looking into.
I'll throw another, another piece of this out there. If we do find kind of the right counsel, maybe we do a, like a public, let's say a forum, an 830G education presentation.
I think that'd be great. There's a lot of misinformation.
Have expressed to me wanting to do something. That's more or less the purview, I think more the purview of this commission to say yes or no. It's your thing.
Yeah.
But we could certainly facilitate that at the town side and do an education session because there's still a lot of misconceptions about what 830G is and what power you have. Like you really don't, I mean, this is, this is the state of Connecticut doing this. And that's why I keep trying to hang out with the governor because I think it's the one person who can leverage that.
Get lunch with the governor, let me know.
Yeah, leverage bonding or something with these towns, uh, where these legislators are because this is destructive to our community. And I feel, I feel very bad for each one of you, but I'm also glad that you're here fighting about it. Cause I know you're, this is not easy for you. And if we could do some sort of education session, get you some legal support, I think it would help. So I'm, I'm on board.
That was, uh, yeah.
We also need expert support because we keep being told we don't have an expert that said this or that. And, and so I asked at one of the meetings, who is an expert? Is our town employees experts? It seems to me that they should be, you know, and then we had the professional engineer, you know?
We don't have that anymore, right?
And we, we'd have to bring in an engineer.
We had a town and we had our own engineer on staff.
We had an engineer that was kind of, he was a great engineer and he went on to do something else because he wasn't really in an engineer spot.
Yeah.
But we were using him. And in fact, it was one thing Beth, the bag is pushed work for a long time. So we need a real good engineer.
Right.
The issue we have is that we're better off getting a firm that has many types of engineers.
Yeah.
Like it's hot, it's hard to find somebody who's good at bridges and just regular civil and this and that. Like we do need that. And I, and something that was said earlier from the town planner like resonated because he was talking about another expert, oh, the fire code. He was talking about somebody in the fire code, how well-regarded he was and how everybody knew him across the state. That's an expert. Those are the kinds of people we need to solicit on our side. And I understand that we should look at that in our budget.
Right. But he works for the applicant.
But there are people out there who work for us.
Yeah.
So, but to your point, we can't, just writing a letter from a police commissioner that says, we don't think that's a good idea. It does not count. I'm just, I just, it's not, they're not experts. And then they think of the world, they're not looked at that way. So if there's things we have safety concerns about, I think we need to get experts in sooner.
Right.
And, and that is costly, but that's probably the right thing. That's how we fight this.
I need to do it really soon because somebody can just.
You do it early in the process. We have to have some folks on hand.
Right.
If I can just jump in and interrupt, I'm sorry. I, you know, what you want to do is when the, when that public hearing first opens, that's where we really need to know from the commission, okay, we want our own traffic engineer. We want our own civil engineer and we want our own, I, I don't know, pick something else out of the hat. And then we would go and find those people. Uh, you know, the firm I work for has pretty good familiarity with a lot of different, uh, professionals across the state and we can do that. And it doesn't cost you anything because the statute in the 830G statute and the, you know, general statutes allow you to charge those expenses back to the applicant. So we'll go out, get a cost from a, from a, let's say a civil engineer. They'll tell us what their estimated cost is. We pass that along to the, to the applicant and they pay. The key is, the key is having, you know, you all having a familiarity with the application as it comes in. So that when we open that hearing, you can say, we want this, that, and the other thing. Because you've only got that limited 35-day window when that hearing is open to get those reviews back. Now you can get an extension, of course, but not every applicant is going to be willing to get that to you. So that's, that's the key is the timeliness of, of asking for those, uh, expert opinions.
Hey Jeremy?
Yep.
About 35 days, is that a Robert's Rule thing?
Uh, that is 87, Connecticut general statute number 87D. 65 days to open a public hearing, 35 days to close and 65 days to make a decision.
So in the extreme case where we need more time, there's nothing we can do to compel them to give us that time?
They can give you up to 65 days more anywhere within that process, but that's it. They can't give you any more than 65 additional days. I think you had an application when I first started that went way beyond that timeframe, which made me uh, really uncomfortable because I think if that application had been denied, that would have been an easy thing for the state to look at or a judge to look at and say, you are way outside of your time limits in 87D. Sorry. Try again. Um, it was approved, so I don't think there's an issue there. But yeah, that, that's, that's Connecticut general statutes 87D spells out those timelines.
This is Jeremy. Maybe we just try to look at the process. Maybe we find a way to get it to you earlier. So as the town planner says, maybe there's a rubric, something to say, these are the kinds of firms you want to set up in advance.
Right.
What you know about it, we can figure out something to do.
Yeah.
Because I think, I think we just, we have just seen the game plan. I think we talked about this.
Yeah.
Of what 830G, 830G applications may look like in the future. People may be very less inclined to help us with their extensions.
Sorry. Dragging on here.
No, no.
Uh, it's something for you to consider, Paul. I feel like, um, you're tasked with a lot during meetings, especially when we have a, a lot of folks in the audience, right? Trying to maintain order and. Yeah, you do. You need a big one. Um, uh, some, in reading some notes from how other PNZs operate, the commissioner, uh, in, in some towns is, just serves as, as the tie-breaking vote. So instead of voting on, uh, every application, we'll only vote when it's time to break ties so that you can maybe be more present in terms of facilitation. So just something to think about that might make your life easier. So you're not trying to do a million things at once. I kind of, when I was reading about that, I was like, oh, that kind of makes sense. You know, anybody takes something off your shoulders. Yeah. Until you, you get a vote for certain. Um, and I, last thing, I said this, I think when I was, when I was fired up, uh, like a year ago. Um, and we were just kind of talking more off the cuff, the cuff stuff, but I feel like the more I think about it, the more I'm like, hey, we should really think about this collectively. Um, um, for some of these 830G applications, the ones that are approved that maybe, well, whether we like them or, or not. Um, what if something we consider is having the developers put their last name on the project in some capacity, right? Where it's like, or they have to own building that they are putting in our town, right? Whether they live here, whether they're across state, whatever it is, that there's some kind of skin in the game for them. So it's not just like a one-off and then they're, they, they put something up that they, that they never have to consider thinking about again.
They sell it.
Yeah. But in, in, and it would be, you know, they, like, it would be, um, you know, running something and it would stand in, in, you know, for 50 years or something like that, so that their name stands.
Who's responsible for it?
That's correct. Yes. Anyway, neither here nor there. I'm still fired up, obviously, but I figured I'd bring it up again because I don't hate it. I don't hate that. Um, also, last thing, Jeremy, absolutely zero offense to you. Um, I know you're doing an impossible job. Yeah. That's always like when someone's going to say something offensive. But I, I really, I really do, I think we collectively miss having a town planner who, who knows our town. I think that, um, that counts for a lot. So I know, I know there, it's impossible to find folks, but, um, but I wrote that note to myself tonight. That, that, that's, that is a big deal.
Right. Thank you, Sher.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, you know? And, and I think, you know, it, it's anybody that comes in new. I mean, I think you, in a lot of ways, were fortunate with Beth. I think she grew up in town. She knows that town like the back of her hand. She could probably walk around it blindfolded after having spun around 50 times and, and know exactly where she is. Um, uh, you know, anybody's going to take time to, to learn the town. I, I, I don't disagree with you. You know, you, you need a full-time planner. There's no question about that. Dan knows that. They're looking for one. Um, you know, and that, you know, I'm certainly not offended. I, you know, I am down in Bethel from time to time. I drove down Nashville Road on, uh, on Sunday. I had, had, had dinner, had a, had a, uh, a wedding welcome party at Broken Symmetry. I was over at Notch Eight on Sunday, uh, you know. Trying to get down there as much as I can, but, um, but I hear you. I do hear you.
Those are just places to party, man. We got other stuff.
I noted.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick. I just, just the whole wetlands thing with, you know, applications we've discussed. To their point, I, I am in the, the field of construction. So everyone knows, uh, designing construction and, and other towns. It, uh, I know here, if we look at an application, it's like, oh, there's no wetlands. Just move on to planning and zoning. Other towns, it's a, you have to rubber stamp it. You have to go through the wetlands application. I know we're adding steps and we're adding red tape to applications. But I, I, we've come across too many things here. I, I think it's.
I thought it was automatic.
No, not every application goes to wetlands. Is that something we can do?
If there's no regulated, if there's no regulated activity wi- within a regulated area, it does not go to wetlands. You know, and I, and I know that, you know, and I'm not going to speak out of term. We, we talked about this and, and if you review my comments from the last public hearing, um, you know, there's, there's. What's that?
Hypothetically speaking.
Hypothetically speaking, if you have a report from a wetland soil scientist who says there's no, uh, there's no wetlands on site. Um, and, and if your staff has looked at it and done measurements from several different angles, um, you know, and there's no, you, you know, you're outside that 100-foot upland review area. It, it doesn't go to wetlands. So, you know, you, you, and again, you know, you commissioners, you, you can look at the report that you receive from the wetland soil scientist and you might have your own experiences with the site and say, geez, I don't know if I agree with that. Then you have the authority to hire your own soil scientist that can go out there and give you, give you.
But that has to be done during the public hearing.
Would have to be done during the public hearing, correct?
Okay. We can put that on there somewhere. Right. That is standard practice. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Anything else?
I'd like to bring up, the other towns have been making moratoriums on multi. Ridgefield just did it. I think Brookfield has done it. Is this something you want to consider, think about, understand what it entails?
It doesn't affect 830G. Right. I've seen the, Brookfields is because they need to evaluate their sewer capacity. And Ridgefields is because, uh, oh, what's the reason? I read the article, but it doesn't affect 830G. And it's only six months. So they can, it's basically, so, I'm sorry, Ridgefields basically so they can, uh, make a map and assign places where it'd be appropriate for, uh, affordable projects to be built. We already have that.
Okay.
And they're, um, they're four months into their six-month moratorium.
To be able to look at everything that we have going on and, and all of our regulations and whatever that we need to make changes or anything else that we, you know.
I mean, we've discussed it in the past.
Basically in the fire.
Yeah, but again, the, the, those moratoriums don't affect 830G.
Right. But it gives.
Yeah. So.
But, but it gives us, yeah, maybe it doesn't. I was just feeling like it would give us more time to get everything that we have and.
When you look on the surface, it feels like it does. Uh, Sproul.
Two, two items. Um, if, if I bundle all of these comments together, I think it would be worthwhile, our commission, to look at the whole process from A to Z. I think it would be worthwhile, our commission, to look at the whole process from A to Z. Uh, and and I don't think it would take more than a couple of hours to go through this. We're all familiar with it, we know where the pitfalls are, we know where. Where people try to pull a fast one, where people are being honest, um. I I think that's something that this commission should. Put on the dock in the very near future. Second item, I think particularly here, and this is between us, I'm not looking for rebuttals from the audience. And particularly here for the inference that we or some of the members in this commission are conflicted. Because we have background in construction. I spent over forty seven years in international construction. Work with huge projects, over a billion dollars, and very small projects. But to say because I know that, I know construction, I know contracting, because I've spent a lot of time litigating contracts, that I'm conflicted. I got a problem with that, and I ask whoever made that comment to be careful next time.
Yeah, Spro, can I just piggyback that, because I I did feel a little bit that way, and that's actually the reason why I wanted to run for this commission. Because I've been on the other side presenting, and I've been here in this room and in other towns, and. I wanted, as a citizen of this town, just to offer what I know, on top of the other experts we might hire. Um, and I might know just something else that might pop up and and use that knowledge, so. And if anything, it's the complete opposite of what was inferred, uh, for why I decided to run for this.
Yeah, I figure I have the background from an architect, I'm an MBA, I got forty seven years' experience in the industry. Of course, there isn't enough. Tarnish my reputation. All right, one last question, and that is. Would it be improper for the right person representing this town, whether it's the commission, town attorney, elected official, to approach the owners of forty eight and fifty?
Carefully, carefully, other properties, let's not discuss.
Okay, to approach the owner of any of these, then become contentious.
To try to buy the property?
Yeah.
We've done that in the past, it happened on Shelley Road. There was a, I believe there was, I don't know how far it got in the application, it was before my time on the board. Uh, there was a eight thirty G proposal on Shelley Road, which if you, if you're not familiar, is that Vedden Road, off of three O two.
Right next to the Frog Preserve.
Right.
Which is why, one of the reasons they did it, is it could connect.
And uh, there was a apartment building, I believe, proposed down there.
It was a complicated.
Yeah.
Deals.
But yeah, the town ended up buying the property, and I believe they have now given it to the land trust, that parcel.
Yeah, because it's still, it's connected.
It connects to the front part, so yeah, there is, there is a, and obviously, everyone knows, you know, uh, as a town, we voted to possibly buy the Wells Fargo property, uh, I think everyone kind of knew what we were trying to avoid, it didn't work out, we're still waiting to see what's gonna happen there. Uh, but, uh, yeah, there is, there is some history there of that happening, yeah. Yeah, Doug, you got anything?
Uh, I do not. I'm a medical device engineer. I got no skin in this game.
Awesome. Yeah, Mr. Lignar, what do you got?
Um, not, not much, I I, I think very good comments tonight on how we should be going forward. With this and trying to, we we're not gonna change eight thirty G. But we certainly can learn to deal with it better. And have the people deal with it better. The more knowledgeable we are about it, the better off we are, hopefully. So, I gotta commend the job that that's being done on trying to get us a moratorium. Because I I understand, I've been around a long enough to know that it's all different facets of how this law became into, into being, and how it's progressed as, as over the years. So it it can't be easy to deal with, because you're not dealing with all apples or oranges, you're dealing with fruit salad. So, uh, we we need to, you know, we need to stick with it, moratorium, give us a break on this, so we can do good planning for the town. Thank you.
He's had some zingers, go ahead. Um, well, I have some comments, but you can go.
Well, I'm like your chairman, you're always gonna ask. Uh, the, uh, the question came up about sewage and and what our sewer capacity is, right?
Uh, the question actually was, how much crap can? Wrote it down.
Uh, we said, I love sending our crap to the.
How much crap can we give them?
I've been mayor a hard time all the time. Um, one thing that Bethel did at some point, that we were very successful in negotiating the amount of our allocation to go to Danbury. And so we're, we're actually in a pretty decent place, considering, because a long time ago, we secured a pretty hefty amount of of ability for us to be able, like Greg Allen, to be able to send stuff to Danbury. Uh, we are, in fact, though, doing a sewer study, an allocation study right now with the Public Utilities Commission, to look at that and kind of see where we are, because, you know, so many things have happened, and we've grown so quickly. So at some point, the Public Utilities Commission will have some information, you know, probably the next six months about what our allocation really is and if we're still on track. So I just wanted to click, I guess you do know it's something that's looked at all the time, because, you know, often it comes, it has, sometimes gets approved there before it comes here. And you might be going, oh, my God, like, how can they approve the sewer? Well, if we had the allocation, we kind of have to approve it, we don't have a lot of opportunity yet.
Right.
So we are doing a sort of, just everybody's, that's it.
Okay, uh, and then, uh, I'll wrap up real quick before I do. Uh, I just want to confirm the public hearing next week on the TOD, that is in the GP room. Uh, Dan, I have a special request, a meeting we had in the GP room, the HVAC is on a timer, it turned off.
Okay.
It was really nice when it first started, and then it got really stuffy in there.
You can turn it on.
Yeah, yeah, you just have to push the button.
Yeah, I couldn't find it.
I'll push it.
Man, the push the button.
Got it, I can do that.
I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to make sure, uh, so that, make sure that was, uh, uh, that, and then it also just make a quick announcement for everyone here in the room. Uh, we are having a TOD, um, public hearing next week, got some proposed changes, uh, down at the GP room at seven o'clock. Uh, I'd love everyone to be there, uh, it is a public hearing, everyone is invited to speak, there will be a sign up, uh, out in the room. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak, um, on some of the proposed changes. I'm sure there's been a lot of chatter about it, nothing is set in stone as far as changes that we proposed. Um, and that'll be our time to, and tell your friends, anybody that's involved, that has any concerns with what's going on in this town, or future, or parking. I think Penny brought up, bring it down, we want to hear it. Um, because like everyone here, we're all your neighbors, and we want to do what's best for the town in our, in our opinions. Um, that being said, uh, I do want to just address one, a couple of things. Um, the, yes, Jane had asked about Reuben Avenue with the money, other, I'm sorry, the money for the hire attorneys, and we're gonna look into that a little bit. Um, and I think there was one other. One person asked, we have fire trucks that can reach three to four stories, Doug?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then Debbie Light had asked how many apartments to reach a moratorium, and that's kind of a skewed question. We went over that, that was just some of the quick questions that I had starred, um. Penny, I had starred your question, inviting you personally come to the TOD hearing. Um, and we did make some changes to the parking, I don't know if that was during your, before you were off the commission or right after you left. Where where our parking in the town of Bethel is actually higher than the state requires.
No, I'm talking about develop and for developers.
For, oh, for like.
Requiring individual. Requiring individual developers.
Oh, okay.
To increase parking.
Got it. Oh, yeah.
You know, I, I know.
Chat next week.
Right, no, I know there's more parking in town, but I'm talking about, like, the, you know, the one point five kind of thing.
The, yeah.
Yeah, now that's what I'm talking about.
Right, so I, I just, a couple of, I I'm, just want people to know, when I am writing these down, I am answering what I can off off the cuff. Um, I'm not just ignoring questions and and not ever getting you answers. Um.
Thank you.
So, that being said, yes, ma'am?
Um, the question was about Wells Fargo, why can't we use that money for lawyer expenses, and maybe Dan can explain that?
Yeah, as it said on the ballot, Bell's Fargo.
Right, but I mean, that's, that was a question.
Yeah, so, so that's, the money was secured, said aside, for that.
Yes.
By the way, I shouldn't say secured, said aside, we had cash for most of that, we could have changed it over and bonded or do whatever we needed to, but it was for that purpose. Our budgets are budget, so if we wanted to increase funding in something else in our budget, it's either we trade this somewhere else, or we go to the Board of Finance for more money. There's, you know, that, yeah, we're not, we are a healthy financial town, but the reason we are is because we make a decision. So we're not, you know, it's our budget, though, that we have to follow.
And then the other question I have is, can we have the IT person at the general purpose room at our next meeting, because we had so many problems?
That's a good point.
And, and people who are online told me that they couldn't hear us, you guys are getting microphones. Well, we had microphones, oh, batteries, but still, I don't know.
If we have, we had a TV that was flickering, too.
Well, yeah, went out, and then the other thing is, I don't know whether words were written on there, I didn't actually look at them. But they, they, I don't know if, if.
I want to use the chat box, so they're just angry.
I have no idea, but all I know is somebody said that things that we said shouldn't come out right on there, it was.
Yeah, we could have the IT someone in.
That'd be a microphone issue, choking a transcription.
Yeah, I mean, it was transcript. So it was, it didn't make any sense.
Well, and sometimes people have to trust on a microphone, some microphones were wrong, some worked, but we could work on it.
Yeah.
Someone said they couldn't hear me.
Right. Okay. All right, um, well, that being said, uh, I hope to see everyone downstairs next Tuesday, seven PM. Uh, I like motion, supposed to be.
Good luck, Jim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.